Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, September 20th, 2023. It is 6:00 PM. We are at Cape Canaveral City Council Regular Meeting, City Hall Council Chambers 100, Polk Avenue, here in the city of Cape Canaveral. I do call this meeting to order, and at this time, Councilmember Willis, would you please lead us in the pledge?
The pledge reads to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, council, staff, and all of you for joining us here today. The public, it is good day, we're excited. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Callum?
Here.
Mayor Morrison?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Here.
Councilmember Willis?
Here.
Alrighty, so at this time, approval of agenda as written or amendments? Are there any changes, council?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Callum?
Yes, I would like to request that we move items 14, 15, and 16 to right before the consent agenda, because they were things we didn't get to last meeting.
Okay, so you're proposing to move discussion items 14, 15, and 16 to which place?
Before the consent agenda, after the budget items.
So it would go just above item two?
Yes.
Okay, council? Any concern or issue with that? Seeing none, I have no issue with it. I think, yeah, if you've just taken up consensus, if you want to make a motion, now I think that'd be best.
Okay, I make a motion that we move items for discussion 14, 15, and 16 to right before the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Callum, got a second by Councilmember Willis, to move items 14, 15, and 16 above the consent agenda item number two. Any further discussion?
I just think, okay.
Yes, please, Councilmember Davis?
No, I just think that the items on the consent agendas are a priority over some of the items that are for discussion, so I would be against it.
Okay, thank you. Council, any other further comments from the council?
I think we have to pay attention to our time and our time limits, and I think that we have to take care of the most important business first. Thank you.
I just moved these to...
Councilmember Callum?
Move them up because they're actually old business that we didn't get to last time, and, you know, it's, these things are important as well, so that was my reasoning for moving them up, to get through them, because we didn't get to them at the last meeting, so.
Thank you. I agree, yes, I think they could have been old business, but consent will all be voted together as well, unless one of them or a few get pulled, but any further discussion on the motion to move items 14, 15, and 16, just below consent, or above consent item two? Seeing none, city clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Against.
Councilmember Callum?
For.
Mayor Morrison?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Against.
Councilmember Willis?
For.
Motion passes three to two, to move items 14, 15, and 16 above item number two in the consent. City manager, city clerk, anything that we need to do with that, or can you continue for the seat board?
Nope, it's clear to us.
Okay. Any other changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the presentation and interviews portion of the meeting, at 6:05 PM. The first presentation of proclamation declaring the week of September 25th, 29th as National Clean Energy Week. I believe we have representative here with us tonight, with the Florida Solar Energy Center, Dr. James Fenton and Elizabeth Myron, are you here? Hello, if you want to go ahead and come forward, I'll join you at the podium, read the proclamation, and if you'd like to have a few words at the end, be happy, so thank you. And council, as always, if you'd like to join for a photo, please feel free to come down. Thank you. Official proclamation of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, whereas the city of Cape Canaveral's unique natural resources are the foundation of our community, and whereas the city of Cape Canaveral is committed to the presentation of our local ecosystem services and is implementing common sense solutions to address energy security, promote economic growth, and enhance operational resiliency, and whereas clean energy, including generation from renewable methods such as wind, solar, geothermal, tidal, and hydro sources, as well as energy storage, is powering more homes and businesses in the city of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, and across Florida than ever before, and is a crucial part of our clean energy future. And whereas growing our clean energy workforce will help expand employment and economic opportunities throughout our state for years to come, and whereas the city of Cape Canaveral's 2021 Resiliency Action Plan calls for the promotion, build-out, and adoption of clean energy to power the entirety of the community and all city-owned and operated buildings and facilities by 2050, and whereas the city of Cape Canaveral has now completed and energized two large-scale rooftop solar arrays atop the city of Cape Canaveral's Community Center and the Cape Center that are actively lowering utility bills and emissions, and whereas we must harness the power of city of Cape Canaveral's entrepreneurs and small businesses, ensure government collaboration, to assert American energy leadership and dominance in the global marketplace, and provide access to low-cost, low-emissions, resilient energy here at home. Now, therefore I, Wes Morrison, mayor of the city of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, do hereby proclaim September 25th through the 29th, 2023, to be National Clean Energy Week in the city of Cape Canaveral, and I encourage all businesses and individuals to implement the cleanest, lowest-emitting, cost-effective energy technologies available. Sign and seal this 20th day of September, 2023. Thank you.
This is yours. If you'd like to go over here and take a photo.
Oh, yeah, sure, okay.
Can we just stand up here?
Yeah, whatever.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity here. I'll tell you an interesting little story. So, the Florida Solar Energy Center was created almost 50 years ago by the Florida Legislature. We were not created by the University of Central Florida. We're located there, we were created by the legislature, at the time of the Arab oil embargo, okay, because we started to realize in Florida we could take advantage of the sun back there, instead of using imported fossil fuels into the state of Florida. I remind you, we don't make anything here, okay, in that regard, fossil fuels-wise, and we were using that to create hot water heaters to put on everybody's roofs, okay, and they needed somebody to test and certify that. We still carry that out, we do that today with photovoltaics, those residential PV panels. We ensure that line drawings and everything done for that are meet quality control, as well as measuring the panels. We also work with the electric utilities and doing the durability and manufacturing on some of the PV panels, partnering with manufacturers that are actually in the state of Florida. Coupling that with the biggest group in energy-efficient buildings, I have 30 people that work on energy-efficient buildings, we're responsible for a lot of the code that comes along, we're now taking PV in buildings and electric vehicles and integrating together into energy storage in your homes. You're going to find your residential home by the year 2030, okay? You'll be able to have PV, make it a net-zero-energy home, have enough batteries, and it'll be cheaper than the utilities can ship you solar electrons. So I appreciate the fact that you're investing in solar, I encourage you to do everything you can do to be energy-efficient. Clean energy is an investment, it's not an expense on the behalf of the city. You get your money back, and we could argue about the internal rate of returns, most of the things you deal with are all about expenses, it's important things to spend money on, remind you that's an investment. The other thing you brought up was the workforce. In Florida today, the clean energy workforce is twice as big as the agricultural workforce, and we're just getting started. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Dr. Fenton and the entire EFSEC organization, we appreciate your efforts and look forward to a clean energy future. Okay, so now we are moving on to the presentation by Jane Johnston with the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission promoting coyote awareness and education. Ms. Johnston, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, mayor, council members and staff for having me tonight, really appreciate you inviting us to this opportunity to speak a little bit about coyotes, especially here in the city of Cape Canaveral. So, I'm Jane Johnston, I'm a Senior Wildlife Assistance Biologist with Florida Fish and Wildlife, also known as the FWC for short, and my program is Wildlife Assistance Program, and we talk to residents from around the state of Florida about whatever type of wildlife conflict they might have. Bears is the top conflict, but coyotes comes in at number two, so. Next slide, we are going to show you some of our calls that we get statewide about coyotes, because every time a biologist speaks with a resident, we do track it in the database system, and this helps us take a look at some of the trends that might be happening statewide, and then we'll drill down the next couple slides to a more local level. So you can see there's a lot of dots in coastal communities, we do see a lot of coyote activity in coastal areas, and then in urban population centers, so. Next slide. So in Brevard County, so we're going to bring it a little bit closer to home, you can see that there are the same types of dots that represent the calls that we've gotten, now this is over a three-year period on each of these slides, so it's, most of the calls we are getting are coyotes in area statewide and around the county, but then if we go to the next slide, we're going to come into the city of Cape Coral, the kind of calls that we've gotten here in a little over three ye... I'm sorry, city of Cape Canaveral, the calls that we've gotten here over the last three years, and so, not as many dots here. That doesn't mean that you guys are not having a lot of coyote conflict, it just may mean that one of my biologists hasn't talked to a resident about it. And so one of the things we do with this kind of data is if we see a lot of dots popping up in an area, that's usually a signal to us that we should reach out to the community and try to do some outreach and education about how to deal with coyotes that are in your community. Next slide. So it's pretty common, people think that once you build a bridge from the mainland to a barrier island, that the coyote crossed the bridge to get here, but actually they're very good swimmers, and so coyotes are able to swim from the mainland to a barrier island, because we do have barrier islands in Florida that don't have a bridge, and yet we still have coyotes there, and they are able to swim from the barrier island back to the mainland as well. So, next slide. So I want to talk a little bit about what our approach is to coyote conflict, since it is the second highest number of call volume that we do get in the state of Florida. And our approach, we want to work at the local level by doing some engagement, and so one of those setups is a workshop, which we'll be doing here tomorrow night, so we'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. So we want to work at the local level with communities with workshop formats that'll be a much longer presentation and give attendees an opportunity to speak one-on-one with an FWC biologist. We also do printed materials, so we have a plethora of digital media that can be downloaded and printed, we can also ship out that media or send that media out to cities, communities, and individual residents. And then we also have what we call our disposable signs, so if you see those corrugated plastic signs that say "for sale" or "garage sale," we have ones that talk about coyotes, and it says, hey, there's coyotes in the area, and we will ship those to communities as well. And that's usually twice a year. Wintertime, we tend to have a lot of activity from coyotes, because it's their mating season, so the female's going to be more active, gaining more weight, being prepared to become pregnant with her pups, and then the second time we have a lot of calls is during dispersal, which we're getting ready to come upon. The pups that were born back in the spring are now going to be ready to find their own territories and their own mates elsewhere outside of their family group, so. We also have a different tools that we can do with residents, so besides doing presentation, we can come and we can train residents on what we call hazing. Hazing is a scaring technique, so it's aversive conditioning for the wildlife, so for people to feel comfortable and confident if they see a coyote one-on-one, that they're able to yell at it, use their arms, scare them off, you know, so that they want them to move off, and what you're going to signal to the animal is, I don't want to see you when I'm active, either when you're out in your yard or in your community, or walking your dogs, because that tends to be quite a few sightings as a result of that, so. So we can work with residents on hazing techniques as well, so we can always come back and do a little bit more work. So we've got, we have different types of things that we can loan out to the public, so we have trail cameras, so if the city or if a community doesn't know where the coyotes are coming from, where they're going, how many are there, we can loan some trail cameras to them, and they can do some evaluation of what the activity might be, what are the coyotes doing on the island. We also loaned out hazing deterrents, so these are motion-activated deterrents, so you don't have to be one-on-one when you see the coyote scared off away from your yard or your community. And in addition to that, we do also work with cities if they desire to develop their own coyote management plan, we will help guide that process. So we often find, if you work at the local community level, it's much more effective than us coming in and doing it for the community if you guys are working together with each other. So, next slide. So, same place, same time, tomorrow night, we are having a coyote public outreach session. This is our workshop format that we're going to be doing for the residents of Cape Canaveral, and so it'll be a longer presentation by your Regional Wildlife Assistance Biologist, Lauren Barf, she'll speak for about 35 to 40 minutes, and then we disperse, and we have individual tables that are topic-specific, that you can go to and speak with an FWC staff member one-on-one, and we'll also have some city staff there for residents to speak to as well. Next slide. All right, so my last slide was some information, I don't think it's up there, though, if you want to share that later, you can, so I wanted to make sure people knew how to reach out to us in case they can't make the workshop tomorrow night, I know it will be recorded and it'll be aired later, but you can call the FWC and speak with a Regional Wildlife Assistance Biologist, your regional office is in the Ocala area. You can also reach out to us through our website, through Ask FWC, and you can take a look at our website at myfwc/koys and get a lot more information there. So, thank you so much, and any questions from any of the council members, the mayor, the staff?
Thank you, Ms. Johnston. Thank you, Ms. Johnston, we appreciate it, looking forward to the workshop, I think I'll save some of the deeper questions for that, but in the ability to put some cameras out under the circumstances, the world we live in today with all the ring doorbells and cameras, it sort of spontaneously comes together, and we've got some local footage, and really appreciate what you're doing to help. It sort of seemed to have an increase over the past few months, it's kind of calmed down now, but we are learning and becoming more educated on how to manage and do it right, so, council, any other questions for Ms. Johnston?
All right, thank you so much.
This time we're going to go ahead and do the exciting point of the presentation of, not more exciting than anything we've had, but I guess crescendo here with our very own first and foremost gold certificate, so the Florida League of Cities University Gold Certificates of Excellence to Mayor Pro Tim Angela Raymond, and Councilmember Willis, if you'd like, we can go ahead and go down, I believe I've got the information Okay, this is, do we have the representative from the league? I just want to make sure I'm not stepping, is Ms. Caraballo over here? Sorry, thank you.
She was.
Can I get that out?
I'll hand the certificates.
And then y'all can come down over here, see if you guys can stand up there. So this time, as we take our seats, and council certainly have a few words, the first one I'll read is from the Florida League of Cities to Mayor Pro Tim Angela Raymond, it says, Dear Mayor Pro Tim Angela Raymond, congratulations on achieving a gold FLC University certificate for elected municipal officials this year. We know the hard work and dedication required to achieve this certificate, and the league greatly appreciates your participation in the inaugural year of the program. We have had a strong response since the program launched, and look forward to even more officials participating in the coming years. Your points were tabulated from August 2022 to August 2023. The flyer enclosed with your packet has information about each tier, how to accumulate points when the FLC University will give you mid-year status update. We hope you are already planning next year's activities to move up and maintain your status. Again, congratulations, thank you for supporting FLC University's educational programs. This is from President Julian Caraballo, and the same letter was presented to Councilmember Willis, so thank you very much and congratulations. Any words?
I'd like to say something. I think that community service is very important, especially for our city, especially, we've been developing a lot in the last five or six years. It's been a joy for me, I've met a lot of people, and I think we've come a long way. I kept saying we're going to move forward, and that's what we have done. And another thing I want to say, it's not a cakewalk. If you are running for city council, it's a lot of work, you have to be prepared to sit at long meetings, and not only that, there's a lot of preparation involved, sometimes we have a 200-page agenda to read. Also, if you're really involved, and I have been, I've had to attend once a month Space Coast League of Cities and Florida League of Cities, all of the training sessions, so I just want to alert people who want to run or are thinking about that, it's not about me, it's not about any of us here, it's about the city and our residents. Thank you.
I won't say much, but I appreciate the presentation and the opportunity to serve, and it does take a lot of work, and you do have to learn a lot, and you never stop learning, so doing all this to try to make the city a better place, so thank you.
Thank you, and thank you both. Any other council members want to speak? Thank you, yes, continuing efforts to become better and having, we're neighbors, just like, we're all neighbors together, and we all have our opportunity to try and contribute, and very thankful for your efforts to be as good as we can be, so. We are now able to move forward into the public participation portion of the meeting. I've got a few cards, again, if you haven't had a chance to fill out a card, you can pick one up at the back, provide it to our officer, and for those of you who are live-streaming and listening home, we ask that you just please raise your hand, and I will recognize you, unmute you, and allow you the opportunity to speak. We allow for three minutes to speak, and then, got you, thank you. That's indicated by the green light that comes on here, when it goes yellow, you've got about 30 seconds, and when it goes red, we ask that you please wrap up, and if you don't mind, please state your name and address when you come forward, and we'll be able to record in the minutes, and most importantly, we appreciate all of you who are being here and take the time to participate. The first card that I have here is James Iceman Teal, leave. Mr. Teal?
Good evening, city council, mayor, and city staff. My name is James Teal, I own a company called Memsko Ice Company. We have a very small green footprint, because we make our ice on-site and store it on-site and vend it on-site, all totally automated, which several of you may have experienced at 8101 North Astronaut, which that machine is on that site. I'd like to talk to you about your Code of Ordinance 110468, accessory structures, no accessory structure shall be erected in any front yard. One or two family residents shall have an additional accessory structure erected per unit. No accessory building should be used for permanent living quarters, and it should contain no kitchens, cooking facilities, or it may be not used temporary housing guest for the occupants of the main building, and it shall be used, it can be used as a separate dwelling. That's 110468. I want to bring to your attention the code of your ordinance number 110333, accessory uses and structures in a C1. 8150 Astronaut, just north of here and directly across the street from 8101, where that ice machine has been, was there until recently, since 2007. That is zone C1 at 8150 Astronaut. In the C1 Low Density Commercial District, customer accessory uses of one or more of the principal use is clearly incidental and subordinate to the principal use, in keeping with the low-density commercial character of the district are permitted. I've been working with city staff on understanding why 110468 is ruling not in the front yard. 8150 Astronaut is a warehouse in the zoning of C1, and it has a parking lot that consists of asphalt and concrete. It does not contain a front yard. What I would like to have city staff do is help me understand why that's rated as a front yard, and have the city attorney give us interpretation on that particular 8150, because we would like to put our ice machine, our packaged ice machine, back in the city of Cape Canaveral. It's the only one, it was the only one in the area, a lot of residents have used it, and a lot of businesses. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Teal. If I would direct- I would direct you to please reach out to our city manager and/or department director, Mr. Dickey, I believe, if you want to help.
Sure. Yeah, we'd be glad to. I don't know if the city attorney wants to say anything on this matter. You want to? We don't usually take action under these items, but...
Yeah, they just borrowed my attention. That's something we would have to discuss.
I would encourage you to reach out, please, and see what procedure would allow you to take that path.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Teal, I have two cards here for you, actually, I just noticed...
Well, I asked if the first one that I had this earlier at the other meeting was applicable, or if I needed a new one, I was advised to put, do a new one.
Okay, so, we're good?
So that's it, that's my presentation, my request to...
Thank you.
Put my packaged ice machine back in the city of Cape Canaveral.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Next card I have here is Mr. John Benton.
I'm going to record this because the deputy there was intimidating, intimidating me for you guys in case I get out of line. Well, I wouldn't be out of line if your code enforcement board didn't laugh at me because they thought I was homeless living in a warehouse that I owned with the police officer in the next door to me. That was my renter. Come on, they're laughing at me. All those board members and the lawyer, his lawyer, wouldn't even let me defend myself after Kevin Mann, the deacon at the Presbyterian Church up there, big owner up there, wants my units, testified I lived in that warehouse. I'm sitting right there, and you wouldn't let me defend myself? And then, for a code enforcement hearing, reduction hearing to get my money back, and hey, let me defend myself at least once, you wouldn't let me do it. Think about those people that was on that board laughing at me, giving me the maximum fine. I bet every one of them there would say that they were a Christian. I would have said it, even though I'm not a Christian, I would have said it because it makes people happy. Well, you separated that city in there. You let religion separate it because you won't take down Kevin Mann because that church called you guys on the phone. We don't want John in there trashing our deacon. He trashed me, man, and you didn't let me defend myself. And then you trespassed me. And then Judge, and after I told you, Judge Crawford told me to bring the sign here because you caused the problem. Wes and you, Raymond, signed that trespass order, and then he tried, morally tried to enforce it again last year. You fired Mr. Green for issuing it. Why don't you fire him? He gave it to me again. Laughing at somebody, man, those were Christians in that room. Jesus was homeless, and you didn't, you worshiped the ground he walks on? I'm an American. I'm not a Christian, I'm an American. Don't treat Americans like that. Look at the world, look at Israel. They're having a race riot over there right now for six months, 200,000 people every Saturday night. We want that over here? Six weeks before that meeting, I sent an email to Judge Rainwater concerning a Jew school. It said private school. But when I find out the lawyer that night, her boss, the mayor, the city manager, the guy who gave me the trespass order is all Jew, I have a problem with that. Your church doesn't want to hear about pedophiles, and you don't want to hear about Kevin, do you? I'm an American, man, you don't treat Americans like that, laughing, mocking, taunting them because you think they're homeless. And I got a deputy, and how many people's been fired here? He's up in Cocoa Beach, he's had two promotions, he's a detective now. You tried to hold him responsible, and the police officers that came and investigated up there for that? They did not come into that meeting and testify that I lived in that warehouse because you couldn't push them to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Benton.
Thank you. You ain't got nothing to say?
Dr. Shannon Roberts? Hello, Dr. Roberts, good to see you. Thank you.
Shannon Roberts, 703 Sana Shores Drive in Cape Canaveral. Thank you, first of all, for enabling us to speak, we really appreciate that. I would like to bring up something that came up at the workshop this week, and that's to encourage the council's consideration of dollars for additional parking in the arteries near the civic hub. And the reason I mention that is I just want to document our interest in that, and also to compliment the staff. I know Molly and Jeff and others, I know Zach, really seek out grants to enable us to have, you know, additional federal dollars, in particular state dollars, that might help us with the financial obligations, but also the opportunities there. So I just wanted to compliment that. I did want to mention, and glad Chief Sergeant is here, that the artery between North Atlantic and Astronaut Boulevard at Kumbler Farms has been flashing every week or so. It happens to have been on a Saturday that I'm aware of, and I think that Brevard County Traffic Operations is going to be addressing it, but it goes, it doesn't blink red, and what it does is it flashes red, which is you all probably can appreciate the danger of that with the incoming traffic from North Atlantic. And what's been happening is it just goes off on a Saturday, blink red. I don't know whether it's associated with the emergency light or not, this is, but anyway, I just wanted to bring it to your attention because it is a safety issue. So, it's on a Saturday, oddly enough, and maybe just because I've been out at that particular time. But when I call the precinct, they're very nice to pass this on to dispatch, and they say it's been recorded, I mean, reported, and it's been taken care of, and indeed it is, you know, when I get back into the area. But I do want to bring it to the council's attention and the precinct and the fire department because it's so close to the flashing emergency light. It may be triggered there, I'm not sure. The last thing is dealing with the meetings themselves. I want to compliment the council for the improved technology. It's so much better when we look, you know, from the remote live streaming, it's so much better. The challenge that we're having, and I've mentioned this to Mia and also to Lisa, she explained to me a bit of the background on this, that there are split screens now for the meeting, so we can see you all in particular very well, but what happens is the agenda is flashing for those of us that are looking at remotely, and then it becomes a, it sort of like makes us busy, I think, when we're looking at both screens. So I'm just mentioning this real quickly, it's something I understand, the new technology person that comes onto the staff later may be able to address, but it, at least for me, I can't even watch the council meetings because of the split screen at home. But I understand why it's done here because you all need to see the agenda items from what Lisa was saying. But I just want to mention that is a factor. And then I just wanted to quickly end saying, I encourage everybody to run for council, it's a wonderful opportunity to serve your community, and as Wes said, there's a lot of homework that goes into it, but it's a wonderful opportunity to serve the community. So I encourage any of you that consider it, please do consider running whenever you see the chance. It's a great way to give back to your city as well as to learn about the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the cards that I have for those who joined us here today. If you turn in a card, please raise your hand or intend to speak and missed you. Go online as well now to see if anyone who is live streaming would like to speak. For those of you listening in, if you intend to speak, we ask that you raise your hands, you'll be given three minutes. Seeing no hands raised, we'll go ahead and close public participation portion of the meeting. Bring it back to the council here, and with the next item being budgetary items, one, we have A and B, I believe. Go ahead and pass this over to our city manager and/or attorney, Resolution and Ordinance 2023-2022 and Ordinance 09-2023. City manager or attorney, if you choose. Do you want us to take these up one at a time or collectively?
Yes, yes, millage, millage first.
You got it. Okay, so, Resolution Number 202332 is adopting a final millage rate for the levy of ad valorem taxes for fiscal year 202324 on all taxable property located within the city of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida. And this, are there any questions? The council has, or staff regarding this resolution? It's our final, we've taken this up, done, I think, three workshops, and this will be the second and final reading. Any comments from our city manager?
I may have misheard, it's 2023-22, I think you might have said 32.
If I did, I apologize.
No, that's fine, I'll just clarify for the record. This adopts two separate millages. One is the general government millage, and that is at 3.4632 mils, and it also addresses the library-dependent special district at 0.0432 mils. The aggregate or the combined millage is 3.5064, and that represents a 7.46% above the aggregate rollback rate of 3.2631 mils from the previous taxing year. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Counsel, start with the motion if you'd like, and if there's any discussion, we can, we can discuss.
All right, I'll move that we adopt the final millage rate of 3.5064 mils for the fiscal year 2023-2024, which represents a rate above the rollback rate. It includes two segments, the general government millage and the library-dependent special district. Thank you.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond, second by Councilmember Davis, to adopt Resolution Number 202322, as written. My comments will be short. I do not support a tax increase. This is, I think, 10 years in a row from increased revenue, which essentially is a tax increase. This is a 15%. It will result in a 15% on revenue, I think it's roughly about 7% on the, above the rollback rate. Dot, doing some more research to share since the last meeting, this in dollars, even in 2017, when they, the taxes increased, it resulted in, I think, 20% increase. That was, I think, $800,000 in extra revenue, and this year, this increase, while it's 15% roughly in result, it's still in total revenue almost $1 million, or at least $900,000. And so, I think we've all discussed further why, but I certainly don't want to support a tax increase. And so, those are my position. Thank you. Any other comments? We got a motion on the floor, and a second to adopt it as written.
I have a comment. My comment is, we all know as Americans that everything has gone up, and I even noticed today that even the town of Malabar, which seems as though Malabar has been one of the lowest millage rates, and I've been watching as the public notices are in the newspaper, and every city has had to do this. And I just think that we've done very well with our finances and our budget, and I think it's a great thing that we built City Hall when we built City Hall. And I think in terms of Cocoa Beach and what they're going through, tomorrow night they have a meeting, and they're paying almost double for their City Hall. And so I think that we've done very well with our budget, and I'd like to congratulate John DeLeo and his staff for keeping us in check. And I think it's, it's a conservative, yes, it is conservative, and last year, we gave an increase to our employees on staff, and they deserved it very much. And I'd like to say, thank you. And I think it's just something that's necessary. Things are costing more, supplies and everything that we buy, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Callen.
Yes, I, excuse me, nobody likes to raise taxes, I don't like to raise taxes. But I think, I want to thank John and his staff and, and the council. I think we've really worked through the budget and made as many cuts as we could to try to bring down, you know, the tax increase. But we're looking at, you know, a sheriff's department increase of 8.73%, a fire department increase of 9%. Everything is going up, the mowing service has increased 4.33%. So I think that as much as we don't want to raise the taxes, sometimes we have to. But I do think that we, we can do better, and hopefully, you know, we say this every year, but I'm excited about the CIP strategy we set up for next year, talking about, you know, programs and things that we could have moving forward and how much it's going to cost. Again, you know, we look at, at the strategic planning, we look at different projects, and it looks good, but then when it comes down to the paper and the money, it's, it's a different story. But I think that we did, the council here did a good job of trying to cut as many things as we can. I, again, think that we can do better for the people, but I just wanted to thank John and his staff and council for working hard on this. Again, I think we can do better, but it is what it is for this year. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up about the sheriff's department and the fire. I had it marked also. I think that's very significant because those are two major raises. Thank you.
Any other council members like to speak? I see none. Go ahead and, motion and second on the floor to adopt as written, Item 1A, Resolution Number 202322. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Councilmember Callen?
For.
Mayor Morrison?
Against.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
For.
Councilmember Willis?
For.
Motion passes, or excuse me, Resolution Number 202322, Item 1A passes four to one, takes us to Item 1B, which is Ordinance Number 09-2023, and when our city attorney is ready.
Yeah, Ordinance 09-2023, an ordinance of the city of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, adopting the annual general fund, the wastewater enterprise fund, the stormwater enterprise fund, the enterprise capital fund, special revenue funds, capital project funds, and agency fund budgets for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024, providing for an effective date. This is second and final reading and adoption hearing for the proposed upcoming budget, and also a public hearing item. Mayor.
Thank you, city attorney. City manager, any comments or anything here?
This is, as the item says, we did complete three workshops pertaining to development of this budget. The total budget for this year proposed is $37,157,887, which is a 2.8% increase over the previous fiscal year budget. And as several council members discussed, we did labor hard over this to try to cut things in unprecedented ways. Things were cut that weren't cut previously, but as was said, we are dealing with the impacts of inflation, we see it in all of our support agencies as well, and sometimes it is unfortunate to have to raise taxes. But this budget provides for everything we said we wanted, and then we also took a lot out that we felt we could do without. I want to share also the same comments for John and his staff putting together a terrific budget and, and all the meetings, being so very professional and just doing a great job. Thank you. Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, so the budget was a long process, I think it was one of the better ones of the year. We had met the most since I've served, we had not met more in the past, and really, and it's not about the amount of meetings, I think that the, where we moved was a good, a good move, and every year will, will get better. And this budget, I strongly and respectfully disagree, we can maintain the expense increases and the needed increases for inflation... We can maintain the expense increases and the needed increases for inflation and for our first responders or any other priorities. I think I pointed out that that is not our problem. Our problem is the very heavy parks and rec and cultural leisure services spending, which makes up the large amount of the debt, the portion of the debt we've taken on as well. And so this message has been the same since 2017 is, please, let's get these essential items fixed first. And unfortunately, that budget doesn't go there. And so can we survive on the same amount of funds last year? I think we can, but I'm not opposed to increasing budgets. I think budgets have to increase. It doesn't mean you always have to increase taxes. When you look into all the revenues and certainly with increasing property values, we can do it. I believe we can do it. It's not easy to set out and to say, I want to maintain the quality of service, work with our staff, team of council, and not increase taxes. That is not an easy task. And I'm not out here to say that what we've done is easy either. It is a challenge, but it can be done. And there are cities that are decreasing taxes in the state of Florida. And I've talked to our city manager about different revenue, and I think we're going to be heading in that direction soon. So thank, yes, city staff and this council. I want to thank you for the time that we did put in. No, we didn't end up in the same place and position, but that's okay. We did improve, and there are some fantastic things that are going to come out of this budget that I 100% support. But it's one of those all or nothing votes, and so I'm looking forward to the year ahead. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Just want to thank John DeLeo and his staff, and thank you, Mayor, for your kind words and for everyone's effort here on the dais. I really appreciate our staff. Thank you.
I would just like to say on behalf of my staff, I think Jenny did an extraordinary job. I think it was a good idea having three workshops this year and then a fourth time, really, with the first hearing. Of course, what many workshops do, things change, it's more pressure on staff, but Jenny did an extraordinary job. And the support behind Jenny, Cheryl Kelly and Donna, the rest of the finance staff, was really noteworthy. But I think it was a good year, and I think the workshops were a really good thing. People had more of a chance to get their ideas out there. Maybe the public needed, got to see a little bit more. So I'm very happy with the outcome, and I appreciate the support from my staff. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Davis?
No, just thank you to the staff.
Thank you. All right, looking for a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 09-2023, adopting the annual general fund, wastewater enterprise fund, stormwater enterprise fund, and enterprise capital fund, special resi, do I have to go? Special revenue funds and capital projects and agencies. Fund budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Councilmember Davis, second by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond to adopt ordinance number 092023 as written. Any further debate, discussion? Seeing none. City Clerk?
Mayor, I think you have to open the public hearing for this ordinance.
The budget, okay. I, okay, so it's titled budgetary items, but public hearing. This is going to be treated as a public, in, public, this is a public hearing item. For those of you that would like to speak on ordinance number 092023, please raise your hand or come forward, and we'll make sure that you're heard. Same as you, for those of you who are listening at home, if you'd like to speak, it's a public hearing item on ordinance number 092023, please raise your hand. We'll make sure that you're recognized. Double checking my cards to make sure that not, oh, there's, I had the four cards. Okay, seeing no other hands raised, we'll go ahead and close public hearing, bring it back to this council. Motion on the floor. I don't think there's any further discussion, council. City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Callen?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Against.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion passes four one to adopt ordinance number 092023. Now we'll move on to what the agenda reads as item number 14. We voted to change the order of the agenda. And so for those of you who are following along or have the agenda item, these are, were items that we did not get to in the last meeting, and so we decided to move them and treat them as old business, starting with item number 14. These are, Councilmember Willis here submitted this one, yes. Councilmember Willis, floor is yours.
Yes, I wanted to request that city council direct staff to research and pursue an agreement with Brevard County to allocate some or all existing transportation impact fees toward furthering the city's transportation safety improvement goals. And in the past, we all know the city has entered into those agreements with Brevard County. And I understand Brevard County currently holds $131,654.90 currently unobligated county transportation impact fees that were collected from development projects here in the city of Cape Canaveral. The money is eligible to be spent anywhere within District 2. What I would like to ask is that we get these funds or get an obligation for these funds to the city of Cape Canaveral so that we can work on the city's prioritized improvement projects as specified in our city resolution 202302 along State Road A1A, which include pedestrian safety improvements, construction funding, associated design costs, right-of-way acquisition, and other local road improvements. And I know that this inter-local agreement has to be, it creates somewhat of a chicken and egg situation where we have to have a project specified in order to ask for the funds. But, and item 14 and item 15 are basically connected because I would like to see us get two signalized pedestrian crossings on A1A. And in talking with FDOT representatives with the Space Coast TPO and also at the Florida League of Cities Legislative Committees that I'm serving on, FDOT is willing to talk to us about it. So if there's some way we can get some commitment or a, an agreement, if we can, with Brevard County to designate those funds or in, have them set up so that if we can get FDOT to join us in this, then we can show them that we have some funds available to put in towards this as well. And I'm sure staff can probably clean that up a little bit on what I just said because they have done it more often than I have. So, Mr. City Manager, if you want to add?
Sure. Mayor, if it's okay. So everyone understands, impact fees are paid when a project is developed, and there's several categories of impact fee. For instance, sewer impact fee. And this is the only impact fee category that is collected by Brevard County. The other ones are collected by the city. Brevard County captures the transportation impact fees paid for any new development project. And there, as Mayor, as Councilmember Willis indicated, that money collected by the county can be spent anywhere in District 2 or the district it was collected in, which means a hotel could be built here, and the transportation impact fee money could be spent in Cocoa or Merritt Island or Rockledge. Well, we've been very successful arguing to have that money be spent in the city of Cape Canaveral. And Dave Dickey has been instrumental in that several years, getting those agreements approved. And that's how we did certain projects that you've seen for streetscapes in recent years. And Councilmember Willis has indicated that there's this pot of money that's still there, collected in District 2, that has been unexpended, and we want to see if we can capture that. And it's, I think you said 160,000, 150,000, 131, I'm sorry. And the idea is, we've identified these very important needs that FDOT doesn't have scheduled right now, which are two additional crosswalks in this, one in this area near City Hall, Taylor, and another one down near Cape Shores and Hayes Avenue, just for public safety initiatives. It's not on FDOT's radar right now. But the idea behind Councilmember Willis's request is if we come there not only asking for this, but also putting money into it, putting skin in the game, we're willing to help pay for this, we have a better chance of success. So my understanding of Brevard County is it's not likely, we're not, it's not likely we're going to be able to just get that money and then say, we're going to ask FDOT to do this. Brevard County is going to want to say, what's this going for? What's the actual approved project? What's the designed shovel-ready project this is going for? So I'm not sure they're just going to be willing to hand it over to us and say, good luck. But what I am willing to bet is they would say that they would offer a conditional letter of support if the project is approved by FDOT, subject to whatever remaining fund or left in the district kitty there at that point. So if it's the council's desire, we'd be glad to approach the county and ask for that support, and then we can take that as a promise or a pledge of supporting of, if we're successful, they'll give us what they got for the FDOT improvement. And I want to add to that, the city council has for now a couple of years put money into the FD, our own FDOT pot that could also sweeten the same deal. So I think if these, if these crosswalks are those things, we just might have, you know, closer to $175,000 right now to put towards it in addition to this.
You, Councilmember Willis?
Well, I just would like to get council's consensus to get, yeah, that's exactly, I mean, city manager explained it far better than I did, but I would just like to push this because there is a lot of concern and a lot of issues with pedestrian safety out here on A1A, particularly on the southern portion of the city.
Mayor Pro Tim?
I was just wondering if perhaps we should have one of us speak at the Brevard Legislature, the meeting, when they do the Brevard County, they come to the government center. And I know I've spoken several times about A1A. I started four, five, six years ago speaking at those meetings, but I think that it's a good idea. And I do think it's a good idea for us to, you know, go right for it and speak about that once again, for the improvement, because we do need A1A improved. So I think the more we can speak in different venues, the better off we are. But I do think that we should start in preparing for that speech. And I'm not certain what the date is. Does anybody know? I'm not certain.
I want to stay focused on the agenda item at hand. We got a request that the council direct staff to research and pursue an agreement. Any comments from any other council members here? Yes, my comments are absolutely charge forward, the fund created by this council, thank you. Way back when we originally said we talked about matching grants, this is another path, project-specific, charge on, and I think it's great. So if you are looking for the motion, or I think, to direct staff, Councilmember Willis, you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'd love to make a motion that we direct staff to pursue any funding that we can obtain from Brevard County or a commitment to fund potential projects in the city of Cape Canaveral.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond. City Clerk, any clarity there on the motion?
I got it.
I have a request for clarity.
City Man?
Specifically directed towards A1A safety improvements?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Pedestrian improvements if possible.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, any further discussion on this? Seeing none. City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Callen?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Item passes 5-0. Item number 14 is now behind us. We're moving to item number 15.
15.
15.
I believe we moved items 14, 15, and 16 above item 2. So I think we just finished 14. Now we're moving to 15, which is the request that city council reaffirm Resolution Number 202302. This is Councilmember Willis.
Yes, as you alluded there, I wanted to provide direction to staff to advocate for the advancement of the two signalized pedestrian crosswalks, State Road A1A, Taylor Avenue, State Road A1A, and Hayes Avenue, to include pursuit of any and all available funding. But we had a Resolution 202302, and it specifies those items. And I think in lieu of the draft pedestrian study that FDOT had released, and again, let me emphasize that it is only a draft, but they did put two items in there that address those crossings. But what happens is they're only placing concrete islands, if you will, in the middle of A1A, which I think is far less than ideal. And I think we would need to follow a similar tact as we did with Roundabout and encourage them that we want more. And that is where I would like to go with it. Let's go to a signalized crosswalk and not the concrete islands that basically, in my opinion, just provide false hope.
Thank you. Is there, are there any changes in the resolution? I know it says to reaffirm, but I think what you're saying is, is to work with the resolution and specify, further define what?
Signalized crosswalks.
Signalized, okay.
Where we needed them.
I assume you want some discussion or feedback, anything from our city manager?
Just to clarify, Mayor, I think, Councilmember Willis, if I understand, you were hoping that the motion that is made tonight is a reaffirmation of Resolution 2302, and the motion also is direction for staff to pursue those two pedestrian crosswalks.
Yes.
Thank you.
I think it is, I'll go first, I think it is a good idea. And I want to work together and do what is ever, I mean, out of all the things, A1A is difficult because we don't have the jurisdiction, but I think we got the heart, and we've put our money where our mouth is with creating the fund, and now so these action items put the rubber on the road, no pun intended, but I think it's a good idea.
Well, I'd like to add that I have met several times with the Seashells Mobile Home Community, who had a resident killed on A1A, Mr. Grover. And I met with them, and they were very appreciative and wanted me to express their gratitude to this council and to city staff for everything that we've done in trying to move this forward, make A1A safer. And I was able to meet with Mr. Grover's widow, and she was very appreciative of our efforts and wanted me to thank council and city staff for everything that they've done. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that with us. Mr. Mayor Pro Tim?
Several residents of Cape Shores have been killed. They often go across that street right there, going over to get a coke at, what's his name?
Yogi's?
Yes, Yogi's. Yogi's, sorry. But several of them have been killed there.
Any other discussion?
Oh, let me, let me just mention one other thing. We need to emphasize to FDOT, and I brought We need to emphasize to FDOT, and I've brought this up at every transportation meeting I've been at, is they're not accounting for the potential development that we could have on the east side of A1A that is going to be desiring to get to the west side, to come to City Park, to come to the civic hub, to go to the library, to go to any other amenities that we have in the city, to walk to the beach. And we need those crosswalks.
Right.
In order to provide the safety that the city needs, so.
Thank you very much. Any other comments on this? Councilmember?
Yeah, I just think, I'm glad that we had started the fund for the A1A to show FDOT that we are serious about safety on A1A. And, and anything that we can do to more, move this forward for our residents is, is really great because A1A is a major priority here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think there's any other discussion. Councilmember Willis, I think, if you want to lead a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we affirm and the reaffirmation of the resolution number 202302 and direct staff to pursue or advocate for advancement of the requirements or the request for pedestrian crossings on State Road, A1A.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Willis, and a second by Councilmember Davis. City Clerk, any clarity on that motion?
Got it.
Any further discussion, council? Okay, seeing none, City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Okay, item number 15 is behind us. Now, moving on to item number 16, this is Councilmember Kellum, running the community center in Sundays. Councilmember Kellum, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we had been discussing this, and then at the last meeting, we didn't get to it. But now we have, thank goodness for Molly, that we got the variance to have the bathrooms there at the splash pad, which helps with the Sunday opening of the C5. I'm real happy about that. Also, but the Nancy Hansen Center, we've had, we've heard from people that showed up at the meetings a couple of times about how we need more tennis courts, pickleball courts. And I think that being closed at the Nancy Hansen Center on Saturday and Sunday is a loss of revenue. Mayor talked about how heavy the Parks and Recreation is on our budget, and we're letting Saturday and Sunday revenue go away by not having it staffed and, and bathrooms there. So I, you know, even if we, I know that we're going to have this civic hub development there, but I'm hoping that I get a consensus from council to hire, move one part-time person to a full-time person, so we can open Nancy Hansen on Saturday and Sunday. And until we start development over there for the civic hub, I think it would help with the revenue, it would help with people wanting to play. The snowbirds are on their way, and it's busy out there, as, you know, people have said, there's... So I think that, you know, with the increased revenue from opening, that it would be an asset for the people, and we would capture that revenue that we're not capturing right now. So that is, I, I hope that we can do that. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, city staff, council, any discussion? Feedback?
My question is, my question is that I'm not sure that that's in the budget for the upcoming year. And I thought that, when we spoke about this, that the Director of Culture and Leisure Services said that the staff for Recreation, Parks and Recreations was already stretched, and that she didn't think that it was possible at this time. Is that correct?
Mayor, if I could ask Molly to come up?
We just want to direct to the city manager, yes?
Yes, I was going to ask if Molly could come up and talk about this.
Molly?
I said that our current staffing situation is stretched. So we would need to adjust our staffing to be able to accommodate additional hours and days. You adjust the staff, or would you cost an extra, or? No, I would have to add hours to somebody's schedule to accommodate that. That would be probably the smallest, like, impact change to affect that.
Councilmember Kellum, where did you get your revenue projections?
I don't have any. I was, you know, Molly would be able to do that better for us. But there, there's some, on, on the agenda page, there is some approximate revenue on this page. I just think that, you know, right now, there are people playing out there, and they're not paying. And, you know, if we added one more, or brought one part-time person to a full-time person. Molly, can you speak to that, how much?
I can't. I'm, I'm not going to ballpark revenue on it because we have a lot of monthly and annual membership people. That's not going to be new revenue, that's just an extra day that they can come. So when you start charging for something that was free, as we found out with the community center, a lot of those takers don't feel that it's worth it anymore. So will we have the blockbuster free pickleball extravaganza when we start charging? There's no way to know.
Right.
So it'll bring in some new revenue, it'll capture some new revenue, but there's no way for me to put a number on that.
Well, we did, we did put some preliminary ideas, and that's what's on the screen right here. And Mayor, if you don't mind, it'd be helpful if we went through this. Just looking at the bullet points, so the bottom half of there says, all of the following dollar amounts are preliminary, and they're just estimates. And the first four bullet points are expenses projections, and the last four are revenues. And they, they correspond to each other. First of all, the one full-time equivalent employee costs approximately $50,000 with benefits. If you're adding C5 Sunday hours, we estimate it would require moving one part-time to full-time. That would be a cost of approximately $25,000 for the year. But scroll, go down to the revenue projection there. Assuming 30 people attend the C5 on Sundays at the drop-in rate, the additional C5 revenue would be approximately $10,000 a year. So we're spending $25,000, we're getting back an additional $10,000. That's just a projection. The next category, moving up to expenses, is to add Nancy Hansen Recreational Center, Saturday and Sunday hours require adding one full-time employee and would cost about $50,000. Jumping down to its corresponding one in revenue, assuming 30 people attend the Nancy Hansen at the drop-in rate on Saturdays and Sundays, the additional revenue would be approximately $18,000. So we're spending $50,000, getting $18,000. This is just estimates. Finally, to add both together, look at the sum total if we did both. To add both Nancy Hansen and C5 Sunday hours would require 1.5 full-time equivalent, would cost approximately $75,000, jumping down to the bottom. Assuming we add both of those options together, the additional revenue would be approximately $28,000. So you're, we, we, we don't, we don't expect we're going to be making a profit at it. But, you know, we don't try to make a profit on everything that we do with Parks and Leisure Services Department. It's about providing amenities for our residents. So that's something the council would have to weigh. And as was mentioned before, I think by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond, no, we did not budget specifically for this.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Raymond, any other comments, questions from you? Just want to make sure everybody has a chance to speak. Councilmember Davis, I think you had a few questions.
No, they were answered.
I have, yeah, I just have a quick comment. A lot of people, and a lot of the condominiums have tennis courts and pickleball courts. And I know my husband never plays on any of the public courts in Cape Canaveral because he plays at Solana on the Lakes, for example. And I know they have an active pickleball group that plays Tuesdays and Thursdays there, for example. And as Solana on the River, we have our tennis courts. And I'm just afraid that when people have to pay, it's a different group that might go because there are other options available. I often host Saturday tennis at my tennis court at Solana on the River. And many, many of the condos along the beach have a tennis court, or two. And I just want to caution everyone that often, when it's free, you tend to, you might go to the public court. But then again, when it's not, you may tend to go to a private court. Thanks. And I know that's, that's why we've, we've lost a lot of our public participation in tennis. I have to say this, because during the pandemic, a lot of people went to the private courts and started the same groups that we played over 20 or 30 years, playing on the Friday, the mixed doubles. And I know I for one miss it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I, I, excuse me. We talked yesterday, or last night, about the civic hub. So if that's true, where people have their own tennis courts, their own pickleball courts, why are we worried about adding more? And then you had said, we definitely need more tennis courts, and we definitely need more pickleball courts. I think there's a lot of people that don't have it at their condo.
That's right.
And again, it's a, an amenity for our residents, and also a way to capture that revenue. Where, I mean, if we did it for a year, because all of that's going to get changed over to the civic hub and construction and all that. But if we tried it for a year and, and to see, you know, what the turnout would be, I think if the people playing on Saturday and Sunday have the bathrooms open and someone to attend it, they're, you know, it's, they're going to come because they have water, bathrooms, all that, as well as, you know, the use of the courts. So I, you know, if, if we're going on the theory that a lot of condos have their own things, then, you know, why are we adding more tennis courts and more pickleball courts?
I'll explain. Well, yeah, I just, I want to make sure we're, absolutely, I think that'd be good. Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tim?
The reason why, there's a difference if, well, there are teams. We have three tennis teams, for example, and those play on the public courts and host from August through April on the tennis courts. And also, we cannot use a tennis coach, and we have hired a tennis pro at Cape Canaveral, Peter McDonald, and he's very good. And he works at the public courts. Can, he cannot do it at the private courts. That's not allowed in most of the condominiums, to have a private coach come to a private tennis court. He goes to the public tennis court. And that, that's why we need four tennis courts to play competitively. And, thank you. That's why I want to explain that.
Thank you. My comments are, I hope we move to be as self-serve as possible. I think that we're all adults, and we can all go out and maintain outside facilities. I agree that inside facilities do need, different than a manatee park, open to the public, free range. However, you know, I, I am committed to pursue opening Sundays. I think the public, if we ask what, what days you would want to be open, I think Sundays would rank very high. And so instead of having Sundays off, maybe there's a weekday off. We can also leverage volunteers to help address the, this court, potentially. And I'm just sharing ideas to do whatever it takes to man and, and train an army of volunteers that can be the weekend supporters and give back to their community by setting up nets maintaining and work with staff, if, if that makes sense. So I support any effort to shift the hours, try to open up and, and, you know, it's maybe not such a big jump, but maybe we test it a, a Sunday if possible, and, and maybe take that Saturday off and just see how it goes. And pursue those opportunities where usually families too are open during that time. I understand this is pickleball and some other opportunities. So those are my comments. I, I support working towards Sunday open and any and all methods to do it. And if it does result, I do think we have the, the funds there. We have a very healthy contingency. We just passed one of the, again, biggest budgets the city's ever passed. And so that, I think we can move money around, re-move appropriations, find projects that might get delayed to make it happen. And if that's what we need to do to open up Sundays, I'm ready to do it.
Can I get a little bit of clarification? Because we are talking about two different buildings.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One is open on, not open on Sundays, and the other one is not open on Saturday and Sundays. And what Councilmember Kellum originally was bringing to the table with this agenda item was the community center, and the, the true demand there was to be able to have the splash pad open. So that, as soon as the sidewalk is complete, is a non-issue. If we want to open the community center on Sundays, it's completely irrespective of the splash pad. So from what I gathered, from how you started this discussion item, was that now that that's kind of, kind of taken care of, because there's still a Saturday opportunity, that the focus was now turned to the Nancy Hansen, which is closed on Saturday and Sundays. And from my personal opinion, I think that I would be, it would be helpful to start out with a Saturday opening, focusing on the mornings, and go from there and see where the demand is. The snowbird season is probably going to be a doozy for us because we have, at least, I don't want to say we've recovered, but we are to kind of settled into our new normal, and we're just kind of plugging along. So I think that we're going to see a little more snowbirds coming back, or some new snowbirds coming into the community. And I would definitely want to support at least Saturdays. Maybe not Sundays right off the jump, but, you know, dip the toe in the water and, and see what happens if we start charging on Saturday mornings.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Kellum? And I see Councilmember Willis like to speak too.
I, I, that's exactly what we were talking about. The Sunday at the C5 was for the splash pad. And then we had talked about if we wanted to open Sunday inside, that we would look at the days and see if there was another day that was slow. And that, and we were leaving it up to you as a department head. And I think that, you know, the Nancy Hansen being open Saturday, if we hire, if we move one part-time person to a full-time, and we're only open on Saturday, would we need to move that person up to full-time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we don't have any wiggle room right now because the community center has to have two people. There's too much space for it to be open and have activities happening in all areas to include on the splash pad, and only have one person that's behind a desk, either interacting with a customer tied to a telephone.
Yeah, it's busy.
Or tied to a computer.
Right.
So their eyes aren't everywhere that they need to be.
Well, I think between the revenue that we might capture there, and like the mayor said, our contingency, that we, as an asset to the residents, that we open on Saturday to start with, Sunday hopefully, seeing how it goes. Thank you, Molly.
Thank you. Councilmember Willis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think it would probably be a reasonable
I think it would probably be a reasonable compromise to go with something that Molly was talking about, was opening the Nancy Hansen for a half-day on Saturdays. Let's see what the revenue generation would be without a big commitment to more salary. I know you're going to have to do some juggling with staff and make some amendments to it, but it would at least give us a, a baseline of what is possible and without a larger commitment.
And it, and it checks a, a resident, you know, request box, which, you know, is important to me. I don't come up with my own ideas. I take what people say to me and try to make them happen. But it also checks a safety box too, because people need bathrooms, people need fresh water, and AEDs are, we know how critical those are, especially in, in sports centers and places where people are going to be participating in, in rigorous activities, so.
Thank you. I do have a card here. Mr. Hathaway, did you want to speak on this item?
Yes. We're talking about outdoor tennis courts and we're talking about indoor facility. I mean, if the weather starts having an impact on our study, on our revenue study, you know, it's not going to make it. I mean, so why not start first where it's indoor on a Saturday and Sunday in the rec center, where you don't have the same amenities as a tennis court in your condo? But you could, you know, you don't have weight systems at your condo, you don't have inside track at your condo, and if it's raining out, you still can go. And I know myself, right now, I travel during the week, so I put dollars on Saturday. If you're open on Sunday, I'm doing a monthly, monthly revenue. I think you get more out of opening sometime on Sunday at the rec center than you will trying to figure out tennis courts that people have condos who can play at. Mike, two seconds. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, council, on this discussion item? Councilmember Kellum, this is your item. If you have a motion or you felt like you've accomplished what you want?
I'm going to make a motion that we open the Nancy Hansen Center half-day on Saturdays.
Direct.
Our direct staff to open on Saturdays and, you know, see how it goes, hire the extra person and, or move the part-time to a full-time. And maybe, you know, down the road, we can open up the C5 on Sundays as well. But, I mean, let's start with the Nancy Hansen Center and, and go from there.
I have a quick question. Are we, I thought instead of hiring somebody, she was just going to try to juggle the schedule to get someone there to do that before we hired?
No.
Or we'd be hiring?
There was a, there was an idea proposed that, that could happen if, at the C5, if we didn't do, say, a Tuesday, but then did a Sunday.
Okay.
But I think what Councilmember Kellum is saying, let's put the C5 away for now, leave it as is for now, and instead focus on the Nancy Hansen. Is that correct?
Right.
Yes.
We do have one part-time person that is budgeted for the upcoming year that's going to help with the Cape Center. That person will give us a little bit of flexibility, but ultimately, we will need to bump someone's hours up, even if it's a part-time person, getting more hours within the, the framework that we can do that without, you know, incurring workman's comp insurance and all of those other requirements that go into full-time. So I can work with Melinda to, to figure out some, some options to that effect, to find out how many hours people can actually do, so that we can do a trial period and try to offset that with this new person coming in. But I don't want to really start the Cape Center completely understaffed.
So we got a motion. I, I want to make sure it's clear and it's accomplished.
My understanding is the motion is to direct city manager to staff the Nancy Hansen with a part-time person on Saturdays for half a day, with the understanding that cost is approximately $25,000 unbudgeted.
Okay. Any, looking for a second to the motion? We should really move towards the second. I'll second the motion. Okay, let's go ahead and discuss. Mayor Pro Tim?
My question is, we are going to then start charging at Nancy Hansen on Saturday mornings, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, so Councilmember Kellum made the motion. I seconded it, Mayor. City Clerk, any clarity on that? You, good? Okay, anything else?
I think we kind of buried a lead here, Mayor. The public might like to know that we were successful in getting the state to approve a variance for our splash pad. People have asked why the splash pad isn't open on Sundays, and the reason, because the bathroom was inside the C5, which is locked up. The Department of Health at the state level did approve a variance request, put together by Molly and her team, excellent job. We have to build another sidewalk that's going to connect a shorter path to the bathroom by Little League home.
By the dugout.
Dugout. So we, we'll have to construct that sidewalk, they'll come out and inspect it, and then we're good to go to open on Sundays, I mean, year-round. So it's a congratulations moment to Molly.
The perfect.
Yes, thank you, Molly.
Congratulations.
Team effort.
Thank you for your work there. I did feel like we, we had a really good chance, and when I heard the news, made me proud, so thank you. And thanks to, I guess, Florida Department of Health, right? That was the.
Yes.
Organization that approved it.
I believe the quote was, from the gentleman was, I guess I'll go out on a limb here and approve this, so.
Well, thank you.
Good job.
Can I just have clarification? By doing this, by opening Saturday morning with that employee, approximately, how much is that going to cost? Just clarification.
I believe bumping up a part-time to a full-time.
Twenty.
About twenty-some thousand. Obviously, that goes up every year.
Okay. Any further questions? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion passes 5-0. So we just wrapped up the moved items 14, 15, and 16, and now we will jump back into the agenda, for those of you following along, to really the consent agenda, which kicks off at item number two. Counsel, if there's any items on the consent agenda you'd like to pull, please let me know. We'll pull them and, or we can, if there's any remaining or all, look for a motion to adopt them all.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull number seven.
Okay. Item number seven, been pulled by Councilmember Kellum. Any other items, counsel? Okay. Seeing none? Looking for a motion to adopt the balance.
All right. I will make a motion to adopt the consent agenda, except for number seven, which has been pulled.
I'll second.
Okay. Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond and a second by Councilmember Davis. Any further comments? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Okay, item number seven, pulled, Councilmember Kellum, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions about this before we pass it. It, it definitely has been a long time coming, and I'm, I'm glad to see that we are moving forward. The only thing I wanted to know is, I know there's a problem with poles on that street that's holding up the construction. And my other question is, what, what's the timeline? What, what are we looking at as far as getting started on this? So that's my couple of questions.
Mayor.
Okay, yes, city manager, that's where you, who you're asking? Councilmember Kellum, please.
Our Capital Projects Director, Jeff Ratliff, is here and he can speak to that.
Great. Hey, Jeff.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Doing good, thank you.
As far as the timeline, FPL says the poles will be moved by the end of the year.
Okay.
Tim talked to him a couple of weeks ago and that was their response.
Okay, so what, will the engineering be done by then too?
Yes.
Okay. And my other question was, in the meantime, between now and the year, I know when Jim was here as Public Works, he took some kind of asphalt or something down there. Those holes in the road down there are really bad again. So for the people that live there, is there a way that we could do that again?
Sure.
To, you know, kind of fill in the holes?
That's more of a question for June.
Okay. Yeah, I just, it, they're really, like, you'll lose your car in there because of all the rain and stuff, so.
We maintained that road in the past.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
So, thank you. That's all I had. I just want to ask those couple of questions.
That's great. I'm excited it's getting done. Thank you, Jeff. Any other? That's it? Anyone else like to speak on it? Great. Looking for a motion to adopt?
I make a motion we adopt consent agenda item number seven.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Kellum, second by Councilmember Willis to adopt. Item number seven is written. City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion passes 5-0. That wraps up the consent agenda, items one through 10. And now we move on to items for action, item number 11. We are at 7:41 PM. We have 11, 12, 13, and 17 remaining. 11, 12, 13, and 17 remaining. Counsel, are we doing okay? Okay, good deal. Okay. All righty. So item number 11, item for action, resolution number 202321. Establishing rates and charges and other terms and conditions for public EV charging stations operated by city-on-city-owned or controlled property. City Manager, any thing you want to go over here with us?
Yes, sir. This resolution adopts the charges and the rate schedule for the EV chargers, which council approved at a previous council meeting, where we'll, we will be replacing the free-to-charge Clipper Creek chargers with the fee-to-charge Nova Charge chargers. The locations are specified there, Manatee Sanctuary Park, Banana River Park, and three at Cape Canaveral City Hall. The charges were derived from researching areas, area chargers, and there's a couple of different models we could have chosen from. One is time-based and the other one is kilowatt-hour based, and we opted to, to support the kilowatt-hour based one. There are a number of other fees that go along with it that I can just go into very quickly, briefly. But to start off, the kilowatt-hour proposal is that the residents would be charged 15 cents per kilowatt hour for the first four hours, and then that would jump to 20 cents once you pass four hours. For non-residents, it would start at 20 cents per kilowatt hour and jump to 25 cents after four hours. So there's a resident break there for that. The second thing is there is a 50-cent charge plus a 5% of the total transaction charge cost that's tacked on to all of that, and that's how Nova Charge, like any other company that does this, makes their money. So if it's a $20 sale, you're adding 5% on for that, plus 50 cents, so an extra $1.50, and that's how they make their money. The next charge I want to talk about is the idle fee. It's 15 cents per minute for, if you're fully topped off and you're still plugged in using that. The 15 cents will continue to tack on to your bill until you disconnect from that. And what's important to note about that is that Nova Charge, anybody that's using these is going to have to open an account with Nova Charge. Nova Charge has an app. The app can alert you when you're, you're topped off, and plus, some cars also alert the users when they're topped off. So the point is to stop the lingering at 15 cents per minute. This ordinance does another thing, our resolution does another thing. It proposes that the city manager have the authority to reduce the rates by 5 cents per kilowatt hour, under a special condition. And that condition is if there's the declared, declared weather emergency, evacuation order, hurricane and such, the, the thought there is that you want to make, make it easier for people to charge and not harder for them when they, at a time when they're troubled. I have a thought about that, and I've, I've spoken to Zach about it, and I, and he supports it too. I think perhaps a more effective tool for the city manager to have would be, instead of cutting them off at 9:30 every night, the city manager is authorized to leave them on for 24/7, so people can have more opportunity to charge. Because I don't think it's about saving money during an emergency as much as having the ability to charge. And that would open that up, only during a declared, not just a weather event, but I think under kind of, any kind of declared state of emergency. That's not in this, but I, I'd propose that we add that to that. And there's a very brief thumbnail sketch overview. I invite Zach to please add if I missed anything important.
No, Todd, thank you. That was great. Staff basically conducted a market analysis of eight other cities in the state of Florida, some of which were in Brevard, some of which were out of Brevard, all different sizes, some even smaller than our own. They landed, we saw in that market analysis anywhere from 12 to 20 cents per kilowatt hour being charged. And a lot of cities, we also found, were kind of in the same boat that we were. They had started off with free charging. They saw an explosion in growth and, and usage of the stations and had to move to a pay model to cover costs and the enhanced usage. That was pretty much summed up really well by Todd, so. I don't have anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach.
All right, counsel, back here. Any questions for staff?
I have a couple of things. This may be late in the game, I guess, but, you know, doing research and looking into the, the EV charging stations and the batteries and all that, I, I found some information on electric vehicle batteries catching on fire in a lot of places. And cities are banning them from, like, in Sydney, Australia, it happened in an airport where the batteries blew up and burned up like six cars. And so looking through research, San Francisco, the amount of car fires doubled, New York doubled. It's killed 11 people and injured 269. And the question that I saw a lot researching this is, is our fire department ready for this? They say that the science hasn't, the technology, science hasn't caught up to the technology. And my question is, if we do this, what would be the city's liability if something like that happened? And are we ready to take on this? Are our firemen trained for this kind of new technology? I was hoping to ask Dave, but I don't see him.
I can answer that.
Okay. So what they're saying is it takes like 10 times the amount of water to put out a lithium battery fire than a regular thing. And, you know, do we have the training here in the city? And again, you know, what is the city's liability if something like that, God forbid, should happen?
Mayor, could we hear from Zach on that?
Please.
Thank you. Please, Zach.
Our fire department is prepared for that. We had a training session that Don Willis actually attended. Don, I don't know if you want to speak about that, but we had a, with the National Fire, I'm forgetting the name, National Fire Council, but big organization that basically governs over a lot of fire departments in the United States. And, yeah, to your point, Councilmember Kellum, it is something that fire departments have to become aware of and handle nowadays because they're being so widely adopted. But our fire department, in discussions with them, they are prepared, they know what to do and how to handle it. There are certain things that you do have to change and things like that, but they are prepared to do it, as many are, many other fire departments in the country are, are preparing to do. You know, it's, it's kind of, sure, there's no technology that's perfect, but there's a heck of a lot of gas car fires out there too. You know, literally tens of thousands, if not more. So, you know, technology is improving all the time, and this fire, the, you know, for example, battery compartments are becoming compartmentalized where the fire can't break into other compartments. So it's, it's becoming quite advanced quite quickly, so it's, yeah. I don't know if Councilmember Willis wants to speak anymore on that webinar?
So the, so the science is catching up to the technology then, that they are improving the batteries all the time?
Oh, yes. I think I have some information.
Mayor, it's not just the batteries, it's also the containment of the batteries as well.
Right.
Right. I think I had a, uh, maybe I didn't. There was some recent surveys done that we had looked into that actually showed that EV fires were much less pervasive in the public eye than what was, was perceived to be. Um, and are, are much safer, in fact, than gas vehicles, just because there's simply more that can go wrong in a gas vehicle in terms of the number of components that it has. Um, you know, every, every time you go to the gas station, you, you do run the risk of a fire. That's just the way it is. Um, so, you know, I guess my answer to that is no technology is perfect, but the technology really is there, uh, to stop that, and it's getting better very, very quickly. We're, we're talking billions of dollars in investment to, for automotive companies to address any potential safety issues.
So then my question is to Mr. Anthony, what, I mean, because it's a utility here for us, and then if something would happen that cars would catch on fire, would the city be liable for that?
Well, I mean, I can't speculate, but for the city to be liable, the city has to do something wrong, right? Has to be negligent. Um, so if some automobile just spontaneously, their, their, their battery caught fire and the city was not responsible, had no act or omission that contributed to that, I can't see how the city would be liable for it. On the other hand, the city would be providing equipment out there, right? So that equipment has to be, you know, safe and, um, and safely available for, for customers to use. So we'll have, you know, some obligation to, um, to maintain them properly and monitor them properly. And, uh, we'll be doing a, an agreement, I guess, with the manufacturer, right? That's, you know, that we would address some possibly indemnities with them regarding the, regarding the, how the equipment functions.
Uh, two things I can add. I, I found the study I was trying to find. Um, so an analysis by auto insurance easy examined data from the National Transportation Safety Board to track the number of car fires compared, and compared it to sales data from the Bureau of Transportation Statistics. Hybrid-powered cars were involved in about three thousand four hundred seventy fires per every one hundred thousand sold. Gasoline-powered cars accounted for about one thousand five hundred and thirty per one hundred thousand, and fully electric vehicles saw just twenty-five fires per one hundred thousand sold. And the study concluded, despite the focus on EV fires in the news, the research concluded they are not inherently more dangerous than gas or hybrid vehicles, although electric fires, to your point, do tend, uh, to burn, you know, hotter and more difficult than gas fires to extinguish. However, fire services are actively conducting training and acquiring new firefighting methods to deal with such plazes as the EV industry grows. We also do have a representative from Nova Charge here, Will Rigsby, and I think he can speak to anything. I don't know. Will, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I just want to take this little brief, we'll, we definitely want to hear from you. We want to work through the questions with staff the way I'd like to do it. I do have three, uh, public comment cards on this, so I want to have an opportunity after we get finished with the question with staff, um, to go to the public, but as we're working through it, um, yes, if you think that would be helpful to help answer the question, please, thank you.
Sure. I just saw Will coming, coming out of my peripheral, so I maybe thought he wanted to say something.
Well, yes, come forward, please. Thank you.
So one thing that you may not be aware of is, you know, from the safety perspective, when you first plug in the car, it doesn't automatically just, the station doesn't just automatically start charging. There's what we call a handshake, you know, for a good twenty, thirty seconds, so the vehicle has to say, I'm properly grounded. I'm good to go. I am capable of charging before it actually will dispense the energy into the vehicle. So that is, you know, one of the safety precautions behind it, and also, you know, as, uh, Zach said, you know, obviously the, the vehicle fires, all of those things are, a lot of what we're seeing is not necessarily the charging station itself, it's more related to the vehicle. And as, you know, your city attorney said, you know, certainly if that's a, a, a vehicle issue, that's not really related to the equipment or, you know, on the city's behalf, so.
So, so if the, if it's not the equipment and it, and it is the car, would their car insurance cover blowing up flat cars?
That's a, that's a good question. It's a new world, right? Um, you know, I can't answer that question, but, I mean, we, you know, the city faces all, you know, the, those sorts of situations all the time. I mean, there are cars parked on public parking lots all the time, right? There are EV, EV cars, there are gasoline cars, right? So, you know, the car owner does have, you know, their personal responsibility for the safety of their own vehicle.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course. Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Your name?
William Rigsby.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, William. Thank you, Councilmember Kellum. Any more questions from your side, or from the, any of the council members for city staff before we go to the public? Okay, got three cards here. Um, if there's, uh, I think the, the order I received them, Mr. Bob Hathaway, for item number eleven, that's this one. Hi, Bob.
Yes, hey. First off, I'd like to say thank you to David and Zach. Uh, they forwarded us the, uh, the fee-based study and the proposal for the fees. And, uh, as the Vice President of the Space Coast EV Association and resident of Cape Canaveral and driver of a EV vehicle for the last three, four years with over a hundred thousand miles and no fires, we feel that it's very fair. Uh, Will Smith, who's the President of our association, he's been involved in EV business and charging, and he, for over twenty years, and he looked at this also. And, uh, our, um, analysis of your studies and all support that, you know, it's a very fair, um, very fair proposal, especially now that there's a residential rate and a city rate, or a non-residential rate, so, um, it's not too much of a premium. I paid, like, twelve cents at home, and the proposal is fifteen cents at the park. That's a very, you know, very generous, and thank you for that. So I just wanted to go on record and say you have the support from the EV group on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Joyce Ward. Joyce? Hey, Joyce, come on forward.
Joyce Ward, five sixty-one Casabella Drive, Cape Canaveral, and I live in the Bayport Condominiums, which is right around the corner from Manatee Park. I was lucky enough to be able to use the charging stations at Manatee Park while they are, were free, and so thank you for that. Um, since I live in a condominium, I only have right now access to level-one charging, which is a one-ten outlet in my garage, so having the level-two charging capability for me is very important as a resident, and I do appreciate the reduced rate, um, for residents. So I just wanted to say I'm in favor of these charging stations going forward, um, and thank you.
Thank you.
I just had a, a few questions. Uh, one is the location of the charging stations at the different sites that you indicated. Um, the one in particular, I know Councilwoman Willis is aware of this, it meant Banana River Park. It seems counterintuitive where the charging station is, and I know that we may not have an opportunity here to relocate where the charging station is, but, uh, it's counterintuitive where the handicap parking is with the electric charging station there. Extremely counterintuitive, because if you're having a mobility device and you're parking in the handicap, you have to walk so much further than the electric vehicles that are charging stations, so I just thought I'd mention that to the city in case there's any consideration of relocating that one in particular. Um, the other question is at the community center, um, again, during voting times and other times, times like that, the, uh, parking spaces are the premium, so I just wanted to mention. One of the things that confuses me as a non-EV user, at this moment anyway, is the rights of the public to park in EV charging station spots. In a case like here at City Hall, where we'd have three parking spaces dedicated to the EV stations, i- is it allowable for us to park there if there's a, a need for parking in event situations like the voting at the community center in one instance, and then in the case of a heavy event here, which we've had several, as you know, we're parking at City Hall as a premium, and I'm just asking the policy for the public and pa- parking there.
Yes, and since we're on this agenda item, we can certainly go back and forth. City Manager?
Sure. Um, state law currently authorizes, um, law enforcement officer to ticket for an internal combustion engine parking in an EV-only space. Um, and I think that's probably meant to encourage the industry rather than punish anybody who doesn't have one of those cars. Um, I'm sure Brevard County Sheriff's Office will be very careful about how they do that, very judicious, and they're, they're great about issuing warnings and they're just encouraging people to move on, but, yeah, state law does currently support that. Zach, is there anything I'm missing on that?
No, that's everything. I was going to say, and I, for the, in terms of the location, the physical location of the stations, that is simply because that is the quickest route to each of the respective locations', um, circuit breaker box. So instead of running wiring all the way down, it's easiest, just from an infrastructure standpoint, to get it as close to the site as possible. So that's why they were put where they were put.
Thank you, Zach.
And I would wish back on that as a resident, only because I think the care of our, um, disabled residents is a premium consideration as well, so. Uh, it's just so much further. It's, it's a pretty hefty distance.
But it, we do have judicious enforcement, and that's helpful.
I, my con-
If I might add to that, though, the, the way the sidewalk is positioned, you know, for the mobility devices is, is a consideration as well, because naturally that curvature in the curb is near the handicap spot now. Again, considerably away from the, you know, the, um, the park area where you would have an event, so I'm just mentioning that.
So I, I'd like to review that with Zach tomorrow. Let's take a look at those locations and make sure that we have optimized them for every all users. Thank you.
And it, it's Banana River that is the, in this instance, that case. Thank you.
We'll look into that. Thank you, Shannon.
Councilmember Willis?
Yeah, um, City Manager, and I did speak about this several weeks back, and the possibility of adding a sidewalk up the side of the pavilion from the handicap parking around to the access, so it would be a little closer to a straight shot from the handicap parking.
Okay. Let's talk about that tomorrow. Thank you.
You.
And Mayor, if, if there's no other comments from the council, and I, I sense we're drawing nearer to a motion, I was-
I just want to make sure one thing. Um, were there any other public comment, uh, cards that were submitted? I got a few. If you intended to speak, please come forward or raise your hand. That's all I have, and I want to check, uh, online, and then, uh, City Manager will bring it back. Okay, if you're online and you intend to speak, please raise your hands on this item. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and, uh, bring it back to the council. City Manager?
Yes, I've asked, um, the City Clerk to pull up the resolution. If you could, Mia, just go to section two. I just want to draw your attention to the meat and potatoes of this item, what we're voting on. Section two, um, the first thing is, A, this, these are the resident rates, fifteen cents and twenty cents, as we discussed, for the first four hours, it changes that to twenty cents after. Um, item B is the non-resident rate, so it starts at twenty and goes to twenty-five cents after four hours. Uh, there's a couple of the conditions that we can continue to, item C there, Mia. This is the additional transaction fee, the fifty-cent flat fee plus the five percent. D is the idle fee of fifteen cents per minute. And E is other terms and conditions, so when you're approving this, you're also approving the, the schedule, which is to cease operations at nine-thirty PM every evening and resume operations at six-thirty AM every morning. I want to make sure we're okay with that. The next one is, any provision of the city code prohibiting or limiting overnight parking on city-owned property, including city parks such as Manatee Sanctuary or Banana River and Canaveral City Park, shall remain in full force and effect, unaffected by this ordinance. And the last one is the tropical storm or hurricane warning or evacuation order. We talked about City Manager being authorized to reduce by five cents per kilowatt hour. Um, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm not crazy about that one. I don't know that I would, I don't, I'm not sure there's a, a great public benefit to that one, but, um, I do like the idea of adding another condition under E here, that the City Manager is authorized to, or actually, it would amend the first one, where it talks about hours of operation, that the City Manager is authorized to, um, authorize twenty-four-hour charging when a tropical storm, hurricane, warning, evacuation, other, or other emergency exists. Mayor.
Thank you. Council? Any, my, my thought would be, um, on the, the tropical storm, you know, if we're declaring an emergency, it might be better to just, I agree, moving away from the cents per kilowatt hour and just doing the extended hours might be a little more simple when you start, I mean, we're, we're voting on a, a future rate change, and that's why I just get a-
Right.
I don't like that as much, and we can all agree that, hey, under those emergen- I would say that if, if a parking spot is available, uh, for charging to the public under a state of emergency so that they can properly evacuate or whatever the need is, is that, uh, we would also just consider, uh, any other use of that parking space that, that you would see. That's not for this agreement, I just don't know another time to say that, but under a state of emergency, if, if that parking space is a resource for someone else, at, you're sort of the property manager of all the properties you are, you would have that authority anyways, and I think that would help to show.
Yeah, like a, a staging area for equipment that needs to be brought out to a park, for example, or maybe we need to do-
Loading up a big truck, trailer, evacuating, whatever.
Sandbags.
Roofers as well, coming and trying to offload dumpsters, uh, just using our beach parking spaces as a resource.
Yeah, those operational type of things we handle, we work with the Sheriff's Department if we have to do that, and that would, this would not be an impediment to normal operations.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I, I would agree with, um, instead of the five cents per kilowatt, to change it to longer, um, charging time. I think that people that don't have electric cars, when they have to evacuate or whatever, they're not getting a five cent decrease in gas. Usually it goes up, um, so I think that extending the hours would be better and more fair than, um, reducing the kilowatt price.
Are there any other comments on that particular change? I think the City Manager would be in, okay with that.
Yeah, I'm working up language that might help with the motion while you're discussing it.
Okay, that's great. Well, I think at a minimum, any other comments from, I'll hold my comment from that, but.
No, it, to my, to my mind, it's all-
That whole section and, and.
I think that is very important. The state, it, it seems nowadays the state considers EV charging as a critical infrastructure asset, right? Because that makes sense, like, as a gas station on a bare island, you need access to that twenty-four-seven. That's why the DeSantis administration put forward funding for charging stations along. They specifically quoted evacuation routes in the state, I ninety-five, I seventy-five, uh, I four, things like that. So, and, and we know from our market analysis that there are critically few public charging stations on the island. So this would definitely facilitate that action during an emergency situation. I think that's a good idea.
I don't have any questions, just have our comments, and I appreciate the public's participation and the due diligence that went in from the, uh, the group that, and the organization and work that went in. Thank you. That, that's valued. Um, I've been following this for a while. I, I know that the concerns, the fires, the issues, and, uh, my, my thought is, I think we're just, we're in a very good position here to, to do this right with, I think, the right people, and as long as we keep it close in front of us, I think this is a, a step in the right direction. Um, and like anything, if we, this isn't permanent, we'll adjust, adapt, do whatever's needed. Um, but I do see, uh, having access to, to, to EV will happen in the private and public sector, and I do hope to see more private sector, we will see, uh, coming along the A-one-A corridor and, uh, our public properties. Uh, I think where we put them will be a, a fun exercise that staff will go through, so. That's it. I think it's a, it's a good move, and, um, any other comments? So the item for action in front of us here, um, uh, City Manager, I think you were over there working on potential change, an amendment? If we, if we just, are you trying to work within that section, or would, do we want to just strike the whole thing and remove and replace it with a new sentence?
I would propose that a, a motion, and I had some language here, but I'm embarrassed to read it because Anthony's is better than mine. to read it because Anthony's is better than mine. The third section of, other terms of usage, Mia, next, yeah, so E has got three sections. So modify the third section to read as follows. However, comma, whenever a tropical storm or hurricane warning, comma, evacuation order, comma, or other emergency situation exists, comma, the City Manager may modify the operational schedule of any or all EV charging stations for the duration of such event. Period.
One more time?
Sure.
Yes, I think, I think there's some, okay.
However, comma, whenever a tropical storm or hurricane warning, comma, evacuation order, comma, or other emergency situation exists, comma, the City Manager may modify the operational schedule of any or all EV charger, charging stations for the duration of such event.
May modify.
So it might be 24/7? It might just be till midnight?
Turn them off with that as well?
Yeah. If there's an emergency-
And the second thing was, if there's an emergency, are we declaring it, or will that be, you know, as, see, I think that would-
Emergency situation could very well be approved by the City Council, but it could be something we have to react to right now. Something just really went haywire, and the City Manager needs the authority to shut them off, or maybe first, that could be an example, but likely the 24-hour operation would be after a City Council observation of a resolution passed for an emergency declaration.
And it would be, I would just want to be notified, maybe had one sentence at the council, these are my feedbacks.
That was part of the job, is to let the council know.
If you're notifying the public, right, it would be more of a-
Yeah, that would be a public service announcement.
Opposed to an individual emergency?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You see what I'm saying? Where you're approached in a situation, you view it as an emergency, and, you know, you're good overnight.
My daughter-in-law's giving birth is not an emergency for everybody. It is for me.
Right. Okay. Counsel, do we have any issues with that language? City Clerk, did you get it, or do you need us to state that in the motion, or as read? Can we?
As amended.
As amended.
Okay.
As discussed.
You're good. Thank you. Looking for a motion, Counsel? We're okay with that?
Make a motion to approve as amended.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmember Davis to approve as amended. Any further discussion, questions, comments concerned? Seeing none. City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Against.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro-Tim Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion passes 401 for resolution.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty-three, twenty-one as amended. Okay. We are now moving to item for action number 12.
Twenty twenty-three.
Absolutely. How much, 10 minutes? Okay. Okay, we're gonna take a recess for 10 minutes. It's 10:13. Let's come back at 10:24, reconvene. Okay?
Eight, twenty.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you very much. Meeting just took a recess, and we are back to items for action here on item number 12, which is to authorize the removal of three specimen live oak trees numbered 1 through 3 at 115 Jefferson Avenue with the required mitigation completed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the proposed duplex, and that mitigation is calculated at a ratio of 1 to 1, which can be in the form of a contribution to the city's tree bank and/or planting of replacement trees. Go to our City Manager, if there's any comments here needed.
Thank you, Mayor. There's some exhibits here that Mia might scroll through, please. There's one piece of property that's been undeveloped on Jefferson, and the 100 block's been there for many years. Last year, it was the owner of the property brought it in for a replat in accordance with city code and created three lots out of it. Those lots were subsequently sold. This is one of the three lots. This is the westernmost lot, and on that lot, the owner wishes to build a single duplex unit. The duplex does not require any further splitting of a lot. It's, can be under one ownership. So placing that duplex on this lot, no matter how you configure it, is going to impact some of those trees. The design that the, we've seen that's been submitted will actually impact three of the four trees. So the owner of the property contacted staff. Staff indicated you need to get, you need to follow city code, which requires the city arborists go out, do an evaluation for each of the trees, determine what kind they are, if they're in good health, if they're specimen-free, et cetera, trees, et cetera. And the city arborists determine that four of the trees on the site are indeed specimen trees, live oaks. Three of those, there's the lot right there, yeah. Three of those trees are in the footprint of the proposed structure, so I think you've got that on the next slide. Yeah. No. Go back. Yeah, I think it's before that, actually. There, that was it, I think. Wait a minute.
One, two, three.
That's not the right one. Is that a different exhibit? What we have in here is different from that.
The placement of the trees is different?
Yeah, the existing tree. There we go, that's it. Yep. So trees 1, 2, and 3 are in the footprint of the proposed duplex. Tree number 4 is outside of it. Dave Dickie, my request clarified with the owner of the property that tree number 4 is not going to be threatened by this construction. He conveyed to the owner that the city code requires that 30% of a canopy tree cannot be disturbed, more than 30% can be. In other words, you can take 30% of a canopy from a canopy tree. Beyond that, it's a code violation. So the developer indicated he'd comply with that, and that tree number 4 was going to remain, and he's sticking to his guns that all he needs to do is take out trees number 1, 2, and 3. So the way we do this is we add up the diameter of breast height of the inches of the three trees. It totals 117 inches, Dave, if I'm not incorrect, I'm at 117. Code says that that number of inches of trees has to be mitigated or pay into the tree bank for that. The developer has indicated that he will comply. It can be a combination of planting and paying into the tree bank, it doesn't matter, but staff in this item is going to- in this item is going to make an agreement with the developer at the time of permit about what that mitigation plan will be, how many trees and what species are going to be planted on site, and/or if anything's going to go in the tree city code, the tree tree bank. That mitigation plan is then attached to that permit. The permit issues is issued, the duplex gets built. By the time it's inspected, final inspection is approved, certificate of occupancy is going to be held up until that mitigation plan has actually been completed in accordance with that agreement. So there's also a landscaping plan that is submitted here. I believe it's the very next one. Yeah. And it's proposing a nice package of landscaping, although it hasn't totaled up the total number of inches. It does talk about some four-inch caliper trees and other ones, but this is not necessarily the mitigation plan. This is just an example of some of the things that the developer does want to do on this property. It could be this. It could be more than this. That'll be determined at time of permit. Another thing I wanted to mention is the code talks about city council can approve a mitigation plan at a one-to-one ratio, but it also says you could go up as high as a two-to-one ratio. Council has the authority. Typically, the city council has reserved that authority for a penalty provision if someone has been a bad actor. In this case, this is not a bad actor. This is somebody who's coming very responsibly to the city requesting permission in accordance with our code to remove these three trees and is willing to mitigate them. Mayor?
Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions for staff? Okay. Hearing none.
Dave, did I miss anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Is the applicant here to speak to it?
If Counsel, Dr. Roberts, I see you waving. Would you like to speak on this item? Why don't, if you don't mind, go ahead and speak on the item if we're okay with that? That'd be the only card I have. And you can fill that out after.
Thank you. I know those of you who know me for many years, this is one of the biggest issues and I do respect the property rights of those that are needing to develop the land, but these trees are just so special to the city and the uniqueness of them is what always worries me every time we start cutting them down. And I just, I know I shared something recently in Tampa where they're really having to do extra money in order to replace the canopy trees. And so I realize this is private property, but I just, it just, as a resident in a tree city, it's just, it just, it seems so counterintuitive to be taking the live oaks down because they are so special in our community. And I don't know whether there's another way. I don't know why oaks can't be moved and then replanted, I guess. Is that correct? I don't know enough about.
We've been successful transplanting palm trees because there's a root ball that we can manage, but the live oaks, the roots are typically as wide as the canopy is and it's extremely cost prohibitive and very particular equipment it takes to do that. And I think that's a very high burden for anybody to do.
What about the mitigation plan? Do we have any means of replacing live oaks with live oaks?
Yes. The tree code talks about canopy tree inches need to be replaced with a certain percentage guaranteed of canopy trees. So you can't just take down all canopy trees and then plant palms. There's a maximum percentage you're allowed to mitigate and it has to be canopy trees.
And I mentioned live oaks because they're just so incredibly special in our city as we know, just some gorgeous trees. And then when you say canopy tree, does that mean live oaks?
Yeah, live oak is a canopy tree. It specifically excludes the palm trees from the definition of canopy tree.
So it would be live oaks that are being?
Or similar oak trees.
In the city.
And also has to be approved plants for this area of Florida. The code adopts University of Florida website that talks about the approved plants for the different areas of Florida. Whatever gets planted has to be for the mitigation has to be on that approved list by as updated by University of Florida.
Well, you can see where I'm coming from. I'm biased as a resident towards live oaks because they're so unique to our community. And I'm just asking if in this case we'd be replacing the live oaks with live oaks. That's, it's the one you see when coming from, not just the canopy category. I'm just talking about live oak, live oak.
I understand your question. Thank you for clarifying. No, the code says you can replace them with another canopy tree as long as it is on the approved list. It doesn't have to be exactly live oaks. But that's a very common thing to do because they are available and they thrive here.
So I'm just, I don't know, we replace them with little baby trees or?
The minimum tree diameter is one and a half inches. So if you've got 137 inches to do, I don't know what the math is on that, but it's probably like 80 trees at 1.5 inches. That's not practical. So you'd want to get something larger to make that maybe three-inch trees and four-inch trees to make that happen. And at some point, you get to the point, I can't plant any more trees on this property. And that's when you have the option to pay into the tree bank.
And this is the last question. Does the city have a master plan as it relates to specimen tree replacements? That's where I guess I'm just not sure as a resident. Do we have a master plan for this as a tree city when we have situations like this or any development that we're doing?
And it's important for the audience to understand when we talk about a specimen tree, we're not talking about a specific species or type of tree. We're talking about a diameter of tree that's over 24 inches. So what the trees, what the city does through its tree code is establish is this, this fund called the tree fund, tree bank, where we have accumulated money and we've expended money from this for purposes of landscaping. And I remember particularly, there was some $100,000 in it at the time we did the Atlantic Avenue Streetscape project that was funded largely from, I think, the area where you live when Ben Co developed all the shorewood.
Homes got down.
Yeah. So that was held by the city for many, many years and expended towards landscaping on that. So that tree bank gets used exclusively for that. So that, I hope that answers the question about what we do with specimen tree money.
It does. And the years I was on council was when we did the Ridgewood North Atlantic Streetscapes and it was very designated for those streets. That's the reason I'm asking. Now that we have, you know, replacement tree options, I just am not clear on where are we talking about in the city. And that's where I was asking if we have a master plan. If we are trying to enhance our canopy, the canopy nature of the city, do we have a plan for where these access to the property trees would go?
So the developer is required to plant them on site on that piece of property to the extent that he can, or she, and then pay the rest into the tree bank. We have done on an occasion with special grant by city council, allowed mitigation off-site on another piece of property owned by the city. And that, that has become problematic over the years because we're to the point where we have so many trees on city parks right now. We, it's hard to find more places for them. So rather than offer up the city's land as available for planting, we'd rather it happen on-site or pay into the tree bank.
I hear what you're saying. I think what I'm seeing, and I hate this because I want to bring up the proliferation of hotels and, you know, we're not preserving, in my opinion, the green space for the city. And this is where the bigger picture.
If you don't mind, can you, I'll get to you in just a second. If you don't mind, have a seat. I just want to make sure.
And I'm always listening.
If we can wrap it up, you'll certainly have an opportunity to speak.
I think it's just looking for that master plan that says this is where we're going to have our canopy trees in the city. And that to me would take some forethought using the tree bank in that regard. Because what I'm seeing is that we're letting go of our green space with the development that we've got. And I'm not sure I see the replacement strategy or the enhancement strategy for green space and the development of our tree community. So, thank you.
Thank you. My comments back to that would be the, I know that we had spoken with city manager and Zach about taking inventory and working towards of all. So when you talked about master plan, I don't know if we have what's called a tree master plan that I'm aware of. But we are pursuing, I think you're in goal, to look at net gain or net loss. So while these oaks might go down at the end of the year in our two-square-mile city, we had a net gain of X amount of canopy, X amount of trees, specimen, Florida native species and so. But we can work towards, I think, a more comprehensive product. So thank you for that. I think.
And Mayor, it's part of the operation.
If you would like to speak, please come forward if you don't mind.
Attorney Jessica Mayer, I represent the owner. There's actually another lot right next to that one that doesn't have any trees. So we were wondering if we could, you know, the master plan could be putting trees on that lot. That be a good solution?
The city's not authorized. We can't authorize you to plant them on somebody else's private property.
No, it's his property. He owns both lots. Go back to the picture, please, of the, of the trees.
According to the property praiser, there are three different owners of the three different parcels.
Might be different companies.
To that lot to the right, he owns. We were wondering if we can plant trees on that lot.
So it is owned under a different name?
Does it?
But it's the same owner?
Well, I think it doesn't matter. The question still stands, and I understand, is in the event that a property owner has trees on one parcel and they own another parcel next to it, are they allowed to satisfy the code by planting trees on the property that maybe isn't the subject property?
Okay.
Right? Is that your question?
Yes.
Anthony, you've thought on that?
I think, well, let's keep it organized here. We have one question. I want to recognize the question. If the answer comes where it's at the discretion of the council, I, I see no difference in, you know, the place to plant the trees. I guess we have the choice of whether or not we would do a bank, right, a financial contribution, or if you didn't want to put any trees on that property or replace. We would have the choice to do the tree bank. And I don't see, from my understanding, pending the city attorney's maybe opinion and help on it, why we wouldn't allow for the physical planning of another property. I haven't thought about that. But I guess my question would be, are we allowed, and if that's her question, are we allowed to do that?
If, I, I'm not averse to saying that that cannot be, that can be done because if the property is controlled by the same principal and it's, I mean, adjacent to it, I think we could probably consider it. The bigger issue would then be, well, how do you ensure that that tree is maintained, right? So this, this particular adjacent property is undeveloped. So when the time comes to develop it, if you were to allow them to plant the tree, how does the city ensure that that tree that was contributed because of this development is maintained? Would be an issue to work out.
But I think that issue, oh, thank you. So it sounds like, how do we overcome that issue when it's on their own property in 10 years? If, if, if on the backside of the property, the owner wants to build a swimming pool where he planted a mitigation tree?
I mean, there's a development permit approval of it. So if it's a condition of the, of the permit approval, then they want to do something later that would warrant a modification of that development permit, then that issue would have to be taken up by the staff, right? So theoretically, if they were to plant a tree in the backyard and that, and that was a condition of the approval for the, for the duplex, and then 10 years later, they come in and they want to put in a swimming pool and remove the tree that was a condition of approval, then staff would flag that and have to, have to address that, right? And that, and that tree that was the condition of approval, if the staff were to allow that tree or council allow that tree to be removed, then they would end up in the same situation they're in right now, having to replace that tree or make a tree bank contribution. That's how I look at it. Does that make sense?
Question I hope was answered in that. I'm going to give you the opportunity. And what, your name again? You said you're the legal counsel for?
Jessica Mayer, for the owner, Gary Whittaker, and Cape Three LLC.
Mayor, and that is M-A-Y-E-R?
That's correct.
Would you mind filling out a comment card before you leave?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Did you have anything else? Okay. Great. Counsel, any questions? Good. That's all I had. Thank you. Okay. Great. So just check in online. I know this one opens up anytime we open it up here. I want to make sure those who might be watching have an opportunity. I don't see any hands raised. So back to the counsel.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Callum.
The trees that are along Jefferson, you show one on, on this plot. These other trees that would be canopy on the other lot that you own, would they be staying? Are you planning on developing that lot as well? Would those trees be staying that are along Jefferson?
Those are standing trees.
Oh, are?
Standing right away.
Oh, cool. Okay. And my other question is, you know, when we, when a lot split is brought to the council, is there a way that we could see the specimen trees that would have to be removed for this lot split before we approve it?
I don't believe that that's a condition of specimen tree removal in the code currently. The code currently says that if the owner of the property is proposing to develop it and it's in the footprint of that development. But I don't believe there's any provision in the code for replating and discussing it at that time.
I agree.
Yeah, that's, that's not a condition of a lot split or a plat or a lot line adjustment. Those are the three methods of carving up a piece of property. And I don't, I don't believe that it's a condition of, a consideration for the council in any of those.
Well, my question is, is it possible to make that part of?
Sure.
Because we're trying to save trees in our city and canopy.
I think it's as simple as the council saying, staff, we'd like to add a new condition to those three.
Or propose a revision to the code.
Yes.
To protect canopy trees at, when land is divided.
Yeah. If that's the council's wish.
I think that would be something, I mean, we.
PZ wants to discuss it. It's interesting. Yeah. I see where, I see, you know, where you see that would have been nice.
Yeah, I mean.
Maybe not this circumstance, but others, it's might help develop. It's a tough issue for.
Well, like Shannon was talking about a master plan. That would be part of the master plan to save our trees is when a lot split came up, if we could see the, the specimen trees in it.
Mayor, I will say that the, if you recall, the council approved our resiliency action plan. And one of the items in that resiliency action plan was for city to sit, for the city to inventory all of its trees and come up with a plan.
I remember. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think that may be, that may, I'm not saying it's going to happen tomorrow. We'll have to get with the council and Todd and see where, you know, how that's prioritized. But that is, that is a, that is an identified work product for staff to do.
Right. I think.
That's a separate initiative, though.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I also want to say that I, with all due respect to Dr. Roberts' comments about a tree plan, I think it's a good idea. But the, the tree code, by operation of the code, requiring a one-to-one mitigation, the intent of that is that we're not diminishing, it's a minimum of one-to-one or a planting. It's not a one-to-point-five. It's one-to-one. You got to equal that amount. You could go higher than that. The council has the authority to go higher than that. That operation of code also helps to preserve, I'm not going to say we're going to have the same canopy spreads throughout the city, but we've got that much live growth continuing to thrive in our city by operation of code.
Agreed. The, Mike, I don't have any questions for staff. I just want to stay on order. Councilmember Callum, I think you were going down the line. Do you have anything else at this time?
No, I, I, I'm just, you know, concerned about the trees. And I, I looked at those trees on that lot and they're beautiful oak trees. They're big and it just, you know, how, 100 years ago, that tree was there and, you know, okay, it's good we're planting new little trees, but it's just a shame to lose those beautiful oaks. So I'm good.
Thank you. Counsel, any other, anyone else which should speak?
I'm all for property rights. It's sad to lose the trees, but I think the tree bank and the one-to-one mitigation is sufficient. And it's, it's his property. It is his trees. So although I'd hate to see him go, but, you know, I think we have a mechanism to, to justify allowing it, so. allowing it, so.
Thank you. My comments are that it's never easy. I don't think it's easy for the property owner to want to remove the trees. Nobody likes removing trees. They're beautiful, and you do see the decades to get to that level. You see these new neighborhoods and, you know, the Vieira, wherever, new development, and all these little oak trees planted. It's beautiful, but come back in 25 years, and that's, you know, a winter park of the world or what, you know, some of the beautiful parts of Cape Canaveral. Back in the 90s, I think, Dickie was saying, those are city, those very well might have been some of the planning initiatives right in the right of way, and I think that's what we have to do, is go on the offense and start putting the trees we want to see specimen as much as we can, utilizing the tree bank, and looking around. When we just stare at this property, makes, you know, folks a little sad, but when you look around what's happening in the whole city and the new trees that are going in, and I think that inventory, thank you for reminding, will hopefully see us moving in as a net gain, and it makes it, you know, not necessarily easier to allow it, but cities maintaining that pursuit of being and holding a tree city. So thank you. Those are my comments. I fully, when I say gentleman's trying to build a home or a tree under this circumstance in our city with our trees and deep coverage, this gentleman certainly has a right to build his home, and I think my hope would be that we could, if he does not want to plant trees on his property, that we could work with him and to accredit and discuss whether it's the abutting parcel or finding the places or reserving the funds for a new project, new expansion on a street like we did on Ridgewood in the future to beautify city properties. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Willis.
We could, we could use a few shade trees at my putting green in Banana River Park. So I'm serious. It gets pretty warm. So if you need a spot.
Well, actually, when I spoke to Tim, our city arborist, I think almost every tree in Banana River Park was from-
Mitigation.
A mitigation effort. So if I understand, you know, that was just flat and barren, and so it sounds like a few more wouldn't, wouldn't hurt, according to Councilmember Willis, but-
If that's the desire, it would be best handled through a mitigation bank deposit, tree bank deposit, because the city also has additional expenses for ensuring the survivability and including irrigation. So it's not just the planting of trees.
Understood.
I will point out that if you look at the landscape plan, there are two live oak trees proposed on the site. So there are, there are, they have targeted that particular species as well for some replanting.
If he owns the other property, I have to ask why you wouldn't build the townhouse on the vacant property, but that's easy for me to say, so.
They'd probably all be developed.
Understood. Well, thank you for doing it right. There would have been an outrage in the community if those trees would have came down without coming through this process. I know it's not easy. I know we got a raised hand from Dr. Roberts again. I think you wanted to speak, Dr. Roberts. I see a raised hand over here. I just want to take them in order. You raise your hand first, counsel, if we're okay? Coming back? If we can keep it.
I'll be real quick on this.
Two minutes, please.
I think the concern I've got is something I think Todd was even speaking to. When you don't have that master plan, that you can run out of space to even plant the trees. That's what worries me. If we don't make, and the strategic plan, as I recall, specify having additional green space, or at least that was the desire by the residents, and I just, if we don't have an aggressive plan in that way, which is your point, be proactive in this, then I just worry about the day when the city won't have any place to put the trees in the tree bank. So that's the reason I mentioned it, that bigger plan to even acquire space for trees, parks, whatever we end up doing, it really is part of that strategic plan, and I think is consistent with the residents' desired goal and vision as part of the strategic planning and visioning. So that's where I'm coming from, because there could be a day when we don't have a place to even plant a tree. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you wish to speak? If you would, please come forward and, thank you, yes. And I'm actually glad you're coming up, because if your preference could be, or what you would request, you had asked about the other property, but we've talked about credits, replanning, that would be helpful.
Yes, I kind of just wanted to make sure everyone understood that the second property is going to be developed just like the first one.
Understood.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Your ability to plant trees on the property is something that we could decide. Do you, is that something that you want, the property owner wants to do?
Yes.
Okay. And do you think that they'll, okay, a one-to-one ratio, is that possible to replace at a one-to-one ratio and satisfy the?
I don't know, but the council can make a condition on the approval that all trees have to be planted at a one-to-one ratio on the site to the extent that they can be, and if they are not, a contribution made to the tree bank, and that's probably the cleanest way to do it.
It's going to be beautiful, beautiful, $3 million revenue there, so it's going to make money for the city as well. That's something to think about.
Thank you. Okay, counsel. So did you have any other comments you wanted to make and clarify? I think you clarified, and I, we could have probably avoided that from my comment, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, so you know more hands raised, counsel? Sounds like we know our options. Do we want to do, I think we should start with, I'm in support of removing the trees, just kind of breaking it up decision by decision, and if we remove, I also would, I think the city manager's reading there would be sufficient, that they mitigate one-to-one ratio. I believe it's the recommendation today, right? Yes, as, I'm okay with that.
But on-site?
On-site, and if the calculations required more that they can't meet, that they would pay? Okay. And is that okay? Not that, we're just making sure that you understand we are concerned about your ability to replace it all.
And it's just the operation of the code. There's a code requirement that these are the two ways to do it, onsite mitigation or pay.
Okay. Counsel, good to go? So we can, looking for a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the removal and the one-to-one mitigation.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, a second by Councilmember Davis. Comments? Seeing none. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Callum?
Against.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion passes four to one. Best of luck to you. Thank you for being here and sticking with us, bringing down to our final two items. We are on to item number thirteen, which is to review submittals provided by potential legislative representative candidates and provide further direction to the city manager. Yes, Mayor Pro Tim?
I recommend that at this time that we defer this to a later date. I think that we need to do a little more research on this. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I think we should just forego hiring one for this year and have council work to promote the interests of the city through the Florida League of Cities, all the resources available to us there, and council involvement with legislative and other organizations that we belong to, that we're members of, and that we serve on. And the funds that we save from that could go into the contingency, and if needed for staff hiring, that would be a way to offset that cost for our experiment with the Nancy Hansen.
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
I agree with that. I think, Todd, when we talked about this, we said, but maybe put it off for like a year and then reconsidered at that time?
You can certainly do that. Council can do anything they want to do on this item. There's no code requirement one way or the other. We've traditionally had a legislative representative prior to Mr. Steele. We had a tremendous run with the previous gentleman, and he did a great job. He had to retire, and of course, with Mr. Steele, he would take, he took the honor to go on to the county commission, and we were saddened to have to terminate the contract for that reason, but I think he served the city very well. But certainly, we'd be glad to respect the city's wishes, council's wishes. If you want to hold off a year, that'd be great.
I think it would be beneficial that we hold off on bringing anyone, because we could use the money for different things as well, so, and use the League of Cities.
I think, yeah, Florida League of Cities does an awesome job up there, so, and that, you know, there's, the small cities like us, Satellite Beach, it's represented up there. So I agree on putting it off and putting the money to.
Well, the good thing about going through the Florida League of Cities and other legislative bodies that, or groups that we're on, is that other cities have the same issues we do, for the most part. There are very, very few issues that are unique to us. So we can push those, emphasize those to our colleagues in other cities and make the case, and we'll have other municipalities working with us, is my point, so.
Yeah, my comments would be, I, a session will really start to heat up here, you know, and we're not in that time today, so I think we're okay now. I would, I would be more waiting to the end of the year, not for an entire year. And, you know, the reality is, if we set a year, if we set three months, at any point, this council wants to, you know, something happens in the environment where we feel, hey, no, we need, we need Cape Canaveral representation, right, that, I think what we have in front of us are some very qualified candidates, and so I just want to keep this work and effort and investment to go out and see who's available and willing in front of us, and I, we're in September, October, November. I'm thinking by the end of the year, we should attack at it, but we'll see. At any point, we could put it back on the agenda if we choose, but for today, it sounds like, look for a motion to, or just take no action. We don't need a date certain or anything like that if you don't want, just. Okay. So consensus is to take no action?
And move on.
Okay, great. Now, we're to our final item, which is item number, we're jumping now to, from thirteen to seventeen, because we took fourteen, fifteen, sixteen earlier, so last but not least, item number seventeen, which is. Councilmember Davis, please, you have the floor.
Okay, I gave you all a holder, which includes the City of Cape Canaveral Code, Councilmember Post Commander, which we all agreed to assign when we were elected, and the City of Cape Canaveral rules of procedure and for managing shorter and efficient, effective meetings. I think that resolution was in December of 2022, that it was a five-o vote. So it's just something I think we need a reminder of what our conduct should be, because in the last couple of, well, recently in some of the meetings, I have just been really disappointed on the conduct of the council while we've been on the dais. I mean, I've seen councilmembers being accused of not being prepared for meetings, trying to convince people to change their vote once the vote was made. I've seen distrust of the staff and continue to discuss the same point over until to convince council. We've interrupted other members and then not accepting the vote after it was made. So I've listed some of the things of different paragraphs of the code of conduct, which I don't think I need to go over all of them, but I personally, and I can't speak for other council, but I can personally speak for myself on August 15th at our council meeting, when myself and a few other councils were accused of not being prepared. I was really offended by that and taken back by that. I think that was unprofessional conduct on the dais to accuse other members of that. Just because I prepare differently than you prepare and you, you know, each other prepare, doesn't mean that we're not in our own individual ways being prepared. So I took offense to that. So what I'm doing, like I said, I'm not going to go over all of this. We all know, we can read and see what it says, but what I'm doing is, to maintain our productive and effective meetings, I think we need to determine what is a violation of our code of conduct. And so I am currently doing the research to find evidence that may constitute a violation. I am obtaining transcripts that indicate, and looking for anything that would indicate a violation, and at a later date, I will bring it to council so that we can all agree or not agree upon what type of conduct is a violation, and then if needed, what we, or how do we want to handle that violation, whether, I know, I was trying to get ahold of City of Cocoa, because I believe they have a violation, if you violate, there's certain things that they would require or type of punishment. So I did not get, she did not get back to me, but just that way, we know what a violation is. We need to call each other out on violations, whether it's me, you, any of us, and that way, we can agree and discuss and find out how we want to handle it when the person, a council member's been violating. So I don't know if anybody wants to add to that, but I just think I, it's kind of embarrassing, some of the conduct that's been on the dais and with each other. That's, I'm going to keep it brief and short, because I know everybody wants to get out of here.
Thank you. Counsel, any discussion?
So I will prepare, I'm getting, I'm collecting transcripts, I'm going over everything, and I will bring it back to council at a later date.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Willis?
I, you know, I can't object to Councilmember Davis's intent, and, you know, would certainly want us to be civil and conduct ourselves in a good manner, but as far as going back and bringing any past incident against any council member, I would prefer to just leave the past in the past, and if there's an example of conduct that, okay, all right, we shouldn't be doing this, pointing it out is fine, but as far as taking action on a past incident.
I'm not talking about taking action on past incidents. I think this council needs to set a guideline or all agree on what are violations of our code of conduct when we're on the dais or with, you know, with staff, with other council, with whoever we're speaking to, so that we have a basis of, yes, if you do this, you violated the code of conduct, you know, and decide what we want to do if a particular person, council, you know, council does violate it. So I'm not trying to bring in past, past times, but I'm just trying, we need to settle or establish what is a violation, and we have to agree upon that as all five on council. Does that make sense? Not bringing that back up the past, but trying to make, give examples of what would violate a code of conduct? Does that help?
Mayor Pro Tim?
I just want to say that sometimes there are, there is aggressive behavior, but it's very subtle, and we sometimes need to recognize those things, and if we have to point them out, we will. Sometimes it's not so subtle, and I have been to other councils and have witnessed not-so-subtle bullying, for example, but I do think we need to be assertive enough to say, that's enough, or, you know, perhaps we need to move on. So the whole idea is just to make meetings shorter and most effective and-
Right.
Recall that it's a business meeting, and that's what we need to do. Thank you.
I just want us to be aware in what we've signed and what we've agreed to and what we all came up with in December of 2022, and just make sure that we're conscious and aware that we are trying to follow the code, be respectful to each other, be respectful to staff, to anybody that we deal with.
Thank you. Any other comments, counsel? I have no comments on the matter. I look forward to improving any way we can, so thank you for bringing it forward, and we should continue to bring that forward as long as we have it in our, in our code. Councilmember Davis, this is your item. If you, if there's nothing, anything else, we can go ahead and, I think, adjourn, if that's what the council wants to do. Before we adjourn, I like that. City- Before we, we adjourn, I like that, city manager, if you, if you have reports, why don't you kick us off, please?
I just wanted to mention we have the coffee with the city manager every Friday after the council meeting, so it's Friday, thank you, Lisa, she managed to get the coffee for free, it looks like from now on, way to go, Lisa, and that's happening Friday at ten.
Aw, thank you, city attorney, you got anything?
Nope, no report.
City clerk's office, anything?
I'm on vacation next week.
Yay!
Well deserved.
I guess I.
Great, sheriff's department, anything, I think National Night Out's coming up, that's?
That's the third, October third.
Thank you very much, okay, and I think, yes, we're good, council, reports?
Yes, we attended our first policy committee meeting in Orlando, it was at the Rosen Center on International Drive, and I went to land use and economic development this year, and I learned a lot of that, we went to Space Coast League Dinner at Tides, and we had, the speaker was the new president at FIT, that was very interesting, and also I met the president and vice president there, and we went to Matthew's Hope Luncheon, which was very nice to see that, and they're going to be picking up the homeless people on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and I believe it's at eight-twenty in front of Canaveral Meats, and then the homeless, my husband's question was, are they going to bring them back? But anyway, yes, they do have a van, and that's going to be a successful program, because then the homeless people can take a shower and get their clothes washed, and then they pick up the clean clothes next week, and not only that, they, they're able to get a snack, and they're able to get beauty treatment and manicures and pedicures, it's an amazing, it's an amazing place, and Scott Blue had come to talk at our city managers' meeting, and if any of you get over, please go to eight-twenty-five Forest Avenue to take a look at this, and I know Lieutenant was there and Commander Keck came, and I think we learned a lot, and Scott Blue is quite a talker, I think he can out-talk me, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willis?
Uh, yeah, we had our first local roads committee meeting, and co-chairs Kyle Harris and Lexi Miller are running a well-organized meeting, they're focused on scheduling meetings every other month, we reviewed the format, the goals, scope, roles, and objectives for the committee, and it, it is going to be a well-run committee, and I'm looking forward to it very much, I also attended the legislative committee, I'm on the Transportation and Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, and we are having coffee with a cop at the C5 October second from nine to ten, and hope everybody could come, I have to pay for my coffee, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis?
Pretty much covered it.
Thank you, I don't have any reports, but I did notice on the screen that a hand was raised, and I know we're about to adjourn, but I just want, if you're listening, looks like Pat Campbell was live streaming, his hand has been raised, and just want to make sure that if he still intended to say something, and he was not hurt tonight in any way or anyone else, Mr. Campbell, if you're listening and council are okay, if he'd like a minute to speak, I would like to make sure that we hear whatever he says, and it says that his hand was raised, and it, you can hover over it, for two-hundred-and-forty-four minutes.
Wow!
So, Mr. Campbell? If you can hear me, I'm going to unmute here and try to give you an opportunity, if you, if you hear and you just choose not to speak, you certainly don't have to, Mr. Campbell, can you hear, and are you still with us?
I can, thank you.
Wow, I, I want to apologize for missing that, you have the floor.
My hand was not raised for two-hundred-and-forty-four minutes. I raised my hand at the discussion about code of conduct, so could you hear me clearly?
Yes, I can.
So three times, in my most recent memory, and, and my memory may not be all that great, but at least three times, whenever there's pushback or deeper questions asked about city staff actions, a question involving citizen concerns raised by the mayor or other council members, there's a code of conduct flag thrown, the code of conduct includes a requirement to be prepared, and part of that is to present the questions if the issues need clarification, in the last council meeting and in the discussion on the lot split, the transcript is clear, Councilwoman Raymond asked questions about how it can be a lot split, and had confusion about tax parcels. She also made statements that the council had already voted to accept the magistrate recommendations on the lot split, twice, referring to that as an important point, clearly the issues were not fully understood, Councilman Willis stated that he would always support the property owner, I'm a property owner, the other residents objecting to the lot split are property owners, Council Willis's vote was not in supporting us, but in support of a developer at the detriment of the affected resident property owners, another part of the code of conduct is a requirement to represent the citizens, asking questions, clarifying, and probing is part of the job, I'll end with, the parliamentarian, the one who advises the presiding officer, the mayor, or other officers in committees and members on matters of procedure, is responsible for the flow of the meeting, why is that not being questioned? Thank you, Mayor and Councilwoman Kellum, for putting the citizens before all this pettiness, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell, and thank you for clarifying, the time was not two-hundred-and-forty-four minutes, it says two-hundred-and-forty-seven minutes now, I apologize for the confusion, and with that, council, we'll go ahead and, meeting adjourned, thank you.